Everybody's in.
All right, with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, all members are appearing remotely uh via Zoom and we are recording the meeting. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? Everyone will get a chance to chime in on agenda items, but if there's something not on the agenda, you can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your real hand. And I see nothing. All right. So moving right along, first item on the agenda is Insa Inc., one twenty-two Pleasant Street, request for determination of minor change. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Yeah, Steve Riley is here for Enso. We also have Brian Robinson here for.
Excellent. All right. And so just to lay the groundwork here, we have a couple of the planning board members and members of the public. Um, so that the the threshold here is whether this is a a minor change or not. Um, if we determine that the proposed change is minor, then uh Insa can proceed. If not, then Insa would need to come back to modify their special permit. So we're going to hear from Insa and their reps about why they think that the proposed changes are minor in nature. So Steve, do you want to kick us off or?
Sure. Thanks, Jesse. I also have Ryan Robinson here from Enso, who's our facilities manager that can help answer any questions. Um, also want to apologize. I'm calling from the airport. I I originally was planning to have this meeting a couple of weeks ago and I had this trip planned. So just in case you hear anything on the PA, but you do have a view of some planes behind me if you guys like. So we are seeking a determination uh that this is a minor modification to site plan. Uh, our facility, just by way of background, is about ninety thousand square feet. Uh, this increase, uh, I think the letter says fourteen-five, but it's probably closer to about sixteen thousand square feet. Um, and what that would consist of is about three thousand square feet of locker room and break state, break space for employees. Um, and then the the difference being cultivation space. Uh, the proposed modifications take place on two floors. One is the street level floor. Uh, the intention there is to add uh, a locker room that's on the outside of the existing facility. Right now, our locker rooms and showers for employees are located in the center of the cultivation facility. Thinking about this again, um, you know, what we're going to need to probably do is locate that cleaning facility and locker room as close to the exterior of the facility as possible, just for cleanliness purposes. You know, the the point of those facilities are so that people can come and get cleaned and then go in and do their job. So, you know, the way that they're they're set up right now, they've got to walk through an area that contains cultivation room. So by moving the existing facility to the outer parts or the existing locker room and showers to the outer parts, we can increase the increase the uh cleanliness of the facility. So we would add those locker rooms and break rooms on that street level floor, uh approximately about fifteen hundred square feet. And then we would also add similar uh locker room showers and break rooms on the fourth floor, about fifteen hundred square feet. And then the fourth floor is where we would have the additional cultivation space that would be added. Um, that additional cultivation space would be uh hooked into the existing odor mitigation that we have, the existing security systems that we have. There would be no change in use. The use would be the same. We would be growing in those rooms just as we are in other parts of the facility. We think that given the size of the increase and the fact that there is no change in use, that it's a minor modification. Uh, we also don't expect to have any increased hiring because of the expansion. This is space that our existing staff is going to be able to get to. So uh, we're not expecting to hire any additional employees. Just going to allow us to increase capacity and just allow the facility to function a little bit better and um provide some better space for our employees.
Uh, Steve, a- any increase in deliveries either into or out of the facility or is it going to be more or less the same uh truck traffic, so to speak?
Uh, same truck traffic. I mean, we would uh have a little bit of extra product, but that's not going to mean additional trips. It's just going to probably mean more full vans that are leaving the facility that go out for wholesale.
And there's no increase to the actual um retail space, right?
Correct. Yeah, there's no, no other changes to the facility. The the only uh increased area where cannabis will be is the cultivation area.
Okay. Um, anything else you want to present, Steve or Ryan, or or you want to hear questions? I don't want to cut you short.
Uh, no, uh, other than to just make uh just one note, we did have a similar type of increase going way back in May two thousand seventeen when our our special permit was first granted. Um, you know, I think that the percentage size of the increase is smaller now than it was then, even though the square footage is a little bit bigger. Um, so you know, we think it's really going to have no real impacts or change on what's already there. It's going to be the same that's already there.
Thanks. Um, planning board members, any questions? Jim?
Thanks, Jesse. Uh, Steve, if you don't mind, uh, we have a view right now, um, a plan up. And I know on the fourth floor is where you're adding the additional cultivation space. I'm having a little trouble visualizing that. I'm wondering if you can kind of visually guide us or at least help um Curtis. Uh, where exactly is the additional cultivation space on this plan?
Yeah, so that's the fourth floor that you're showing there. I think it's the, Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That gray shaded here. That's the top floor. That's the gray shaded area.
Okay.
And and within that is also the um, the locker room area. So that's the cultivation space slash locker room space.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And is that gray shaded area just not part of the facility at all right now or is it being used for something else?
I think that we're using it for some storage right now. Uh, not of any cannabis related stuff, but I think just like some raw material might be out there. I'm I'm not even sure if that's still there, but uh Ryan can probably answer that.
Yeah, it's just like cultivation, storage and stuff. Um, kind of worked in the storage into the plan too. So we're kind of using that too for storage in a couple of rooms, but some of that we don't need anymore for storage.
All right, thanks. Um, any other questions from planning board members? Chris?
The um, the odor mitigation, you said that's the same odor mitigation system. So are you prepare, are you proposing to expand the odor mitigation system and the scrubbers up into that fourth floor and down to the first floor? Or is it already there?
Uh, that system is already there. Uh, there was a, that floor was constructed in the spring. So there was a time in the spring where um that system was coming online and offline just based upon the expansion and repairs that we had to make to it. But that system already exists on the fourth, on the fourth floor. Uh, this would be tying into that system uh that's now been operating uh for a few months. We and we haven't heard any issues in the last few months, uh, once that system was back up and running.
Okay, so the system is sized enough to to accept that fourth floor expansion?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Any other planning board questions?
I see this is minor.
All right, any other, any questions or comments from uh members of the public? Again, you can raise your Zoom hand um or turn on your camera and wave your hand or uh, I think it's star six on a cell phone. Or you can just unmute worst case scenario and ask to address us.
Jeff asked to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Thanks, Jim.
No, that's okay. Thanks. Um, I just had one question, Steve, I think for for the applicant is just about the the process with the Cannabis Control Commission. So I'm just kind of curious, like, did that are, did you already go to them with this change? Or do you go to them after you get the local approval and, you know, because we had heard, you know, whether there was a cap on the amount of cultivation space you can have. Um, I was just wondering if you could just summarize the Cannabis Control Commission role here.
Yeah, so so now that we have the, or assuming that that uh we get approval at the local board, we would go to the Cannabis Control Commission. This would, I think, tip us into the tier seven license. I think right now we're in a tier six, which is between sixty and seventy. Um, so we would tip into that other tier. Uh, so we would, we would file an application with them. Um, they would go through the same processes they have in the whole facility, the inspections, um, you know, review the camera systems, all the, all that security.
Great. That's helpful. I just wanted to get a sense of that. I appreciate that.
All right, any other questions from the planning board or comments from the planning department?
Would you like a motion?
I would, although I seem to have just lost Harry.
I can wait.
I I will say Jim's background is fantastic. I've never seen. I was trying to figure out if it was the background of this house.
It's actually real. I walk by his house every day and it's a, it's an actual library. He lives in a mansion.
I wish. I'm just waiting on you, Jesse.
Yeah, I g- I guess we can do this vote without Harry. That's fine. Um, I will take a motion.
I motion to find for Enset one twenty-two Pleasant Street a determination of a minor change.
I'll second that.
All right, voting to determine that this is a, uh, the proposed change is a minor change. Uh, Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
And I still don't see Harry, so I will be an I and Harry will abstain. All right, uh, Steve, Ryan, congratulations. I don't think we even have a decision for this, right? Curtis?
I issue, I issue a cuts, an unsigned cut sheet that simply says that on this date, the board uh reviewed these plans and for the the reasons listed here determined that it was a minor change subject to section seven twelve point seven or twelve point nine as respective. So just, just that files with the permanent special permit.
Perfect. All right. Best of luck. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye.
All right, and uh with that, the next two items I am recusing myself from, so I'll pass the gavel to Jim Zarvis and everybody have a nice evening.
And can we proceed without Harry? I guess we can, but.
Uh, we have four members. We need four and a special permit. Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate the time. See you soon. Hopefully, Harry comes soon. Let's just do a little count here. We've got associate member Ken acting in this as a full member, as Jesse recused himself. Uh, we've got Chris and we've got Danny and myself. That's four members. So we do have quorum to proceed. We have two items next on our agenda. As he said, my name is James Zarvis. I'm the vice chair of the planning board and today and for this uh pair of applications, I'll be the acting chair. This is actually our second meeting on the topic, although we do have a new special permit in the process. Normally, what's going to happen is I would detail uh open the special permit and detail the process to the public, telling you that we're going to ask the applicant to present. We're then going to have some back and forth questioning with the board and then we're going to open it to the public to have every individual have a chance to speak. I'm going to go through that a little bit more detail, but we do have one issue to cover before.
Jimmy, went on mute.
Jimmy, yeah. Sorry, how long have I been unmuted?
One issue to meet before.
Okay, so thank you. I must have accidentally clicked it. Sorry. Uh, anyway. Uh, we have one issue to deal with before we, I give you my usual explanation of how we proceed. And that is the fact that we actually have two special permit requests. Um, so what I'm going to do first is I'm going to open the first one we have here and then I want to have a discussion with the board and the applicant about how we're actually going to handle the process of these special permits. Uh, so the first one is for Eric Burson seeking a special permit under section twelve point seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance to install parking, storage and recreational usage for the property located at Fort Hill. The second one, uh, which is really the one we would be continuing is for Eric Burson's uh seeking an amendment to the two thousand seventeen special permit under section twelve point seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance to expand operations at Fort Hill Brewery located at thirty-four Hill. Now, the issue here is really a a choice, how we proceed. We can either handle them as separate uh items going through full public processes on each, public hearings on each, or we uh have public speak for each and treat them separately. Or, in my opinion, and I think we need to discuss this as a board, but I strongly recommend that what we do is that we hold, we open both of these public hearings and hold them as if procedurally they were one, because to me they're clearly intertwined with parking related to the other on one and and much more that that relates them directly. Having one process for both and in the end, we have the requirement of coming up with unique conditions and unique findings uh for each one. Um, so what I'd like to do first is I, having proposed that, I'd like to hear from the applicant their opinion of that process and then I want to talk to the board and have a discussion about it and then vote on it. And if we agree that we're going to hold them together, we'll all then open both of them and if not, uh, we'll just start with one. So um, is anyone here from the applicant? Did I see Attorney Lane?
Hi there. Uh, yes, Peter Lane. Here's Bloomberg going North Hampton. I'm here for the applicants. Uh, and Gary Swanson, um, our engineer is here with us as well.
So you've heard uh my preferred idea of holding these as if they were one, uh, but coming out with separate findings and conditions at the end. Do you have any objection to that or an opinion?
Uh, my, my opinion is I share your position on that, uh, Mr. Zarvis. Um, these are inextricably intertwined. Uh, and uh, I don't see how, uh, it just doesn't feel like it would make sense to proceed on them separately. The brewery is seeking to make use of leased space on the farm's land. Um, and uh, for that reason, uh, the farm has submitted its own application. But uh, yeah, uh, I know there's other uses on the farm's land that we are uh seeking uh permits for uh that are not related to the commercial operations of the brewery. Uh, but because of the interrelation between the brewery using the farm's land for its commercial operations, um, I I would say it only makes sense to continue uh as one hearing, um, understanding that in the end you have to make uh two unique decisions.
Perfect. Okay, he seems to be in agreement. Uh, any members of the board have opinions on this or anyone?
I have a question. Is, are the, why is it two separate uh special permit um applications? Is it because it's two separate properties or is it because one is dealing with retroactive um requests for for already constructed um uh activities on the land and ones for new? I I guess I don't understand why.
So Attorney Lane, we're going to direct that question to you. I could hypothesize that it, you know, has to do with, I'm I'm, it's part of it, I'm sure, has to do with allowing us to get notice out for a butters on the additional property. That's a benefit of it. But what else? What were the other reasons?
So yes, in my mind, and after frankly, uh consultation with the board here uh in um August and city planning, that is, we have uh two distinct corporate entities. Uh, one owns thirty-four Hill for the brewery. The other owns the eight acres uh for the farm. Um, it's all within Eric Bearzen's family, but they are two separate corporate entities. Uh, it did seem to make sense that the farm, the Birch Family Farm, that owner would make its own separate application for any uses on its land. What's, uh, and I understand it's complicated. Some of the uses there are personal recreational uses. Um, but others are seventeen seventy-six brewing's uses on Birch Family Farm's land. Uh, so that's, uh, it seemed to me that uh it made the most sense that the two corporate entities would have, each one would have their own application specific to their land.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about this procedural process? I can't see if any of the board members have hands up. I don't see anyone. So at this point, I do want to make sure I get a vote on this. I want to be, but you know, I want to make sure that we're set. So I'm, I will hope that then one of the board members would make a motion to um hold both of these special permits as one hearing with separate findings and conditions for each at the end.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Uh, Ken?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
And I am an I. So the board therefore hereby empowers me to open both public hearings for both agenda items, which I've already listed. I'm now going to start my normal process and to the public, just to let you know how we're going to be holding this. Um, this is, as we're continuing this, actually our second meeting. Uh, in the first meeting, I did detail that there is a a little bit unusual about this case in that over the past three years, the city's initiated three enforcement orders with regard to Fort Hill Brewery. We're going to need to take that in consideration as we go. I'm going to start by asking the applicant to make a presentation uh for the combined uh two agenda items. The board will then ask questions during and after that presentation as it happens. We'll start to go through and discuss different topics, things like parking, noise, all of it. And then we'll start to ask the public and we'll give everyone in the public time to to speak. Depending on how many there are, I may require and put out at that time a time limit, five minutes, four minutes, and that'll only happen if I've got quite a lot of people. Um, and everyone will have an option to speak. I may have to read men a bunch of stuff into the record and then finally we'll deliberate. That's the general process of how this works. Now that everyone understands that. Uh, Attorney Lane, are are you ready to make a presentation or is anyone from your team?
Uh, sure. Uh, I think what we'll do here is uh I'd like to give a general presentation and um turn over uh questions and really further uh technical explanations to uh Mr. Swanson uh regarding the the updated site plans. Um, so, um, as we've established, uh, I'm here on behalf of seventeen seventy-six brewing, uh, the brewery owner uh thirty-four Hill and then the Birch Family Farm uh company that owns the adjacent eight acres. I uh believe and I hope that uh folks can see here that we're uh in the process of making transparent what is going on uh and seeking uh proper authority um for all of the uh existing and proposed uses. As part of that application, uh, we have submitted updated site plans and um hoping that, you know, with it, um, we've begun to address uh all of the concerns that were raised in August. Um, of course, and again, in spirit transparency, absolutely, these uh, the amended uh application of the brewery and the special permit application of the farm uh were part of an agreement with the city to stay enforcement of the uh, to stay the enforcement action in Hampshire County Superior Court. We submitted the plans um by September thirtieth as agreed. Uh, the unpermitted uses related to the personal recreation area uh on the farm by agreement has also been discontinued. Uh, if anybody has gone by, they would see that um both of those areas that have mounds on them uh for uh bike tracks are covered in grass. Um, they are not being used. What is happening here is that uh what appears to be a successful business and uh a popular brewery um and pub is uh is operating and has made some changes and expansions uh in order to um accommodate uh the uh the commercial activity there. So uh, of course, as can be depicted uh on the plans now, there are gravel areas surrounding the brewery where parking is occurring. Uh, and by agreement with Birch Family Farm, uh gravel areas have extended onto farmland uh again to allow for parking. Um, we believe that all of that all of the parking areas uh are certainly necessary to accommodate um the uh seating capacity within the uh the brewery. There are uh, there's also part of the brewery's application is uh an expansion of an outdoor patio. Um, I sense that there'll be questions about it. Uh, rather than anticipate everyone's questions, I think I'd rather just outline the topics. Uh, and frankly, I think turn it over to the board for specific questions they might have. My sense is that as you ask these questions, Mr. Swanson is going to have um a a better command of the technical information needed to answer them. Uh, so we are looking at an application for a proposed patio and new parking area. Um, the uh existing parking on the brewery uh accommodates about seventy-seven spots. And there is parking on the farm, which uh by our count would accommodate another hundred and six spots. Um, we are seeking to add um about a point one six uh air acre area for uh sixteen additional spots uh on the farmland. Um, this would accommodate a total of about a hundred and ninety-nine, about two hundred parking spots um for the brewery whose maximum indoor seating is three hundred and thirty-nine.
Did you say three hundred and thirty-nine? Can I confirm that?
I believe that is what I said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good case. Um, the brewery reports that at the moment during COVID, um, with outdoor dining, they have been seating uh far less than that inside. Um, and that outdoor between the existing uh and the proposed patio, we estimate about uh a hundred additional diners could be outside. Uh, as the plans show, uh, we have um arranged for fire or travel lanes uh around all sides of the brewery. And as Mr. Swanson can uh describe in better detail, um accommodations for um stormwater drainage, um, most of which remains as it previously was. Though for uh parking expansion, both existing and uh proposed, uh, there are some uh some changes to that uh for the stormwater drainage. Uh, one of the other areas of concern was the uh containers. And when I say areas of concern, I am referring to the four areas cited by uh the city and its enforcement action. So one of these other areas of concern were uh storage containers. They have been uh placed at the back of the brewery. Which, and I just need to reorient myself. Yep, thank you very much. I guess Curtis is uh controlling that. Uh, at the back of the brewery there, there are um it like international shipping storage containers uh being used to uh to store um aluminum cans. Um, it uh, as I think anybody who operates any kind of business and even consumers understand now, there are big changes in supply uh chains and um it requires the brewery to order much larger volume of uh aluminum cans and it needs a space to store them before they're used for uh retail uh packaging. So the existing containers um are at the back of the brewery and uh it's on gravel, it's on risers uh or um six by six timbers. Mr. Swanson has indicated that uh he sees no uh impact on stormwater drainage as a result. And uh, we are intending uh space onto the farmland uh to accommodate um more of those containers, but uh that area is also indicated at the um, at the bottom of the plans there. Then again, this is something that is uh fairly crucial to the commercial operations of the brewery, uh same with the parking. And between the brewery and the farm, uh, there's uh an agreement for use of the space for these purposes. Um, again, uh Eric Bearzen's and his family um own both of the companies, seventeen seventy-six brewing and Birch Family Farm, uh, but there's agreement between the companies that um that the brewery's commercial operations can expand onto these areas indicated on the plans. Mr. Bearzen's uh family is also interested in recreational uses on the eight acres that are zoned industrial. There is currently a a fenced in area that really has made no um change to the land, uh aside from the enclosure uh where Mr. Bearzen's dog spends his uh days during Mr. Bearzen's workday. The other areas uh of uh note, and these were areas uh cited by the city in the um in the enforcement action uh are uh essentially areas where Mr. Bearzen uh would like to be uh using as bike tracks. Uh, one was created next to the uh dog enclosure, which is closest to Fort Hill Road. Um, and the other uh is a bit more expanded and is down at the um southwest corner of the farm. Um, Mr. uh Swanson has submitted plans uh that account for uh both existing and new stormwater uh drainage. And again, I will let him answer any questions uh the board had about those.
Are you, uh, is that it?
The uh, not quite yet, sorry. Um, another area of concern. So I think what I've done at this point is uh, I I feel that we have addressed the four issues raised by the city uh in the enforcement action. And uh, they uh They're all fully represented on the plans. I think all existing uses are now represented fully on the plans that were submitted. There's both this plan and there's a second plan that is specific to Fort Hill Brewery, but I think it's most helpful that we're looking at the. The two lots side by side right now. But in addition, Mr. Jarvis, of course, you were stressing the issues of live music and noise at the August hearing. All I can say is I'm sure there's disagreement about this. At both the board and city planning suggestion, I paid a visit. On what I thought would be probably one of the busiest. Times for the commercial and public operations at the brewery on a Friday evening in late summer. To just see what things looked like. I am not an expert. This is not expert testimony and I had no intention of making myself a witness to these to these proceedings. I did want to show everyone that Mr. Berzen's and his family is taking this very seriously, as am I. I paid a site visit. I did what I could to observe and listen for noise. And, you know, my client is of the opinion that the moment they're operating. Outdoor music in accordance with some of the kind of special allowances during COVID. They are terminating music at the required time. It is amplified music. It can be heard. Certainly in my experience and in my anecdotal reporting. I could not hear music, though it was being played, I could not hear music as I approached the brewery. Coming down Fort Hill Road. Could hear it certainly when on the grounds. And on a slow walk further down Fort Hill Road, past the gun club. You certainly can continue to hear music. Again, it terminates at seven. It is in my experience on that one evening, of course. It was not the loudest sound I heard as I walked away from the brewery. Certainly the sound of. Night creatures and Route ninety one were the loudest. I am, I have no doubt that there could be moments where it's louder than I heard it that evening. And I never intend to. To dismiss the concerns of any of the homeowners in that area, but simply to report back to the court, to the. To the board and city planning that in my experience and that you're all and that the suggestion that you all had. I paid a visit and that is what I experienced. Because this is seasonal, because this is part of kind of special procedures during the COVID emergencies. My clients don't see any reason to modify what they're doing related to live music. So, you know, that's the kind of general presentation. I am sure there are questions. Mr. Women submitted, of course, city planning's memo and has several other suggestions. I would leave it to the board to ask your questions between Mr. Swanson and myself. We'll do our best to answer what we can.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Lane. I'm gonna start us off. And I'm gonna start with some basic stuff just to accumulate info and wind our way around to. Probably really dive into the stormwater and thankfully, I think both Danny and Chris will help there. So let's start with some basic stuff. You you said three hundred and thirty nine max indoor seating and a hundred outside diners. Potentially. I have a couple of questions here. First off, can you reiterate? Have your hours changed at all and what are they?
I cannot off the top of my head. And. I'm gonna leave my client is here. And frankly.
At the last meeting we had where we looked at the modifications to some of the outdoor patio, I believe it was mentioned it was two to eight.
For for the for the dining outside or for the live music?
I'm, you know, that's a good question. I got that from the last video as I went back through it. I I believe that was for operation. But I I want confirmation. We need to know what your hours are because it's definitely going to impact this entire conversation. Especially as it relates to to noise, but also just in terms of general occupancy. Now, as I mentioned, you said three hundred and thirty nine max indoor and a hundred outside. I'd like a sense of what you think. How often you're hitting that capacity mark?
Sure. So I just wanted to let you know, first of all, confirmation. That outdoor operations are four to seven Thursday, four to eight Friday, two to eight on Saturday.
Okay, I'm sorry, four to four to seven Thursday. Could you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, four to seven Thursday.
Yeah.
Friday through Saturday, Friday four to eight, Saturday two to eight, Sunday two to six. On Fridays and Saturday, I believe music terminates at seven. And those first numbers that I gave you are for all operations, both music, both. Essentially dining outside, but. Outdoor music is terminating at seven P M.
Seven P M. On all cases. And does outdoor music happen Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
I don't believe it happens Sunday and I'm gonna have to wait for confirmation. I apologize for that.
So if I've heard correctly, I heard Thursday four to seven, Friday four to eight, Saturday two to eight, Sunday two to six. And live music always done by seven. Okay. And we're not sure if it's done all the time. Okay, that's important.
Well, before the end of this meeting, I'll be able to confirm that for you.
Okay, thank you. And do you have any sense of capacity? Like, have you been hitting it?
Indoor capacity is not being hit right now. I believe, as I indicated in the narrative. As reported by my clients. There. Three thirty nine capacity inside is currently seating less than a hundred and thirty. And so between inside and and outside, and again, outside was. An estimate of a hundred, which would include proposed patio space, which is not in existence and no one is being seated there. So certainly between inside and outside, we are well less than three hundred and thirty nine capacity for inside.
Okay. Unless the board has any specific questions about hours or time, I'd like to move into parking.
I do have one question about capacity. As a clarification. Attorney Lane, you're saying that the for the outside, the existing patio and this other additional proposed patio. Equals a total of a hundred diners?
Yes, would would approximately accommodate a hundred diners.
Okay. Okay.
I had, I had a quick one. Yeah, ju- just for clarification, Mr. Lane, just just based on something you mentioned in your. Kind of monologue there, you said that the outdoor music was COVID related. So does that mean? Once the COVID restrictions are lifted, the the outdoor music will again cease? Or is this something that's gonna be ongoing, you know, down like next season as well, regardless of the COVID regulations?
Based on conversations with my client, the expectation is that music would move back inside once COVID restrictions are released. And frankly. If there is no specific permit or even special allowances by the city for outdoor music. It will not occur outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Ken, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Danny asked my question. But is is the band always in the same spot? Within the complex when it's inside the complex? Is it, does it move around? Does it go to the front of the the complex, the back of the complex? Where do those bands set up?
So again, you know what I would like to do here is I'm just gonna make this clear. Eric, if you're on here, I'd like you to just. Answer these specific questions that are being asked.
That'd be very helpful. Here he's on here.
We could just give him a second.
How do I speak?
There you go.
All right. So Eric, if you could just answer these questions about operations?
All right, first of all, regarding the operations, I believe that in our original permit, I think my attorney misspoke. We do wanna have the flexibility to play outside. We're not looking to change our permit, but the original permit granted to us in two thousand seventeen. We were allowed to play music outside until eight o'clock. We give the 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 musicians the option whether they wanna play inside or outside. And that's that. So I do want to clarify maybe a mis. Speaking by Peter. Now, if you could repeat the second question, I'd be happy to answer that. I was fiddling with my computer. In order to.
When the music plays on the inside, when the band's set up on the inside, is it always in the same spot within the complex? Is it in the back of the complex? Is it in the front of the complex? Where is it? Where do they set up when they're inside?
When they're inside, there is a designated stage.
Okay.
It's elevated by about two feet. Historically, there have been no issues when we play inside. And on that same note, when due to the COVID, when we started playing outside. They're always behind the silos. In the back of, in the back of the building.
Thank you. That answer. All right. Thank you very much. All right. And I think we'll probably get more to the patio and the music and the bands in a little bit. But so I'd like to move into parking now. We've talked about seventy seven existing spots, expanding to a hundred and six, maybe a hundred and ninety nine spots, all told. Did I get those numbers correct, Attorney Lane?
Yeah, based on the space available in the estimates. Yes, and Mr. Swanson could speak more to the estimates if that's what you're looking for.
Well, yes, I would. I know a lot of this is intended to be unpaved, unstriped gravel, in fact. So, you know, beyond the the stormwater stuff we'll talk about in a bit, I I'm just curious, like, how are you coming up with these numbers, given that we don't? Have any striping?
If I may, can you hear me? I got my thing on? The site plan that you saw that's been updated from our earlier submittal. All the part, the existing parking on the seventeen seventy six, the brewery property. Is all shown. It's just a matter of counting them. And. Parking ability is. Shown on the. The larger parcel, the family farm part. If you look at the seventeen seventy six parcel, you can see all the parking places that exist are shown, right?
Is that fully paved or some of the back?
The ones in the back are are indicated. You can't, this is all. Gravel parking area, you can't stripe it. The ones along the side on the westerly border opposite the patio and the proposed patio. Those are striped, as are the ones near the front. They're all straight. The rest of it is on. If you if you wanted to really push it, there, a parking spot has. A width of nine feet. And eighteen feet in length. So what all that you do in the back on the gravel is simply take the total length, divide by nine, and that's your number of parking places.
Okay.
They've been designated on there. If, for example, you were to temporarily line them out, that's the number of cars you could get in there.
How are you, you know, people are just gonna show up. You'll get a lot of people. It'll be a busy day. Things are going well, I hope for the business. And that's gonna get full. Who's determining where people park and and keeping the travel lane clear? What, do you have a method?
There too, yeah. Eric, why don't you answer that?
All right. So with this COVID restriction, the town has allowed us to expand. And we actually ate up a whole bunch of our parking. If you look onto the left side of your screen. So so using cones, I have been able to. Actually fairly well organize traffic on the site. It's sometimes people are a little off. But never once have we had overflow of traffic spilling on to Fort Hill Road. So. In my discussion with the with the building inspector, you don't need. A a permit for asphalt. So if you guys really want, I would be more than happy to asphalt my entire property. To accommodate these parking spots, but if people are somewhat organized and they have been in the past. It's worked.
That's gonna be an interesting discussion, especially with relation to stormwater, because making that much impervious surface is definitely gonna be detrimental, I'm sure, to stormwater.
Well, is not, my goal is not to pave it because it's better for, it's better for the environment. It's better for everyone not to pave it. But I'm telling you that over the, over the course of COVID, when we've had all the parking on the left side. The north, you know, the patio side of the parking, we we close that off for the safety of our customers. The parking has worked. Not once have we had spill over on to the road or our neighbors' properties.
To be clear, Mr. Burdens, when you say the parkings work and you've used, excuse me, you've used cones. Does that mean that you've been able to keep the travel lanes in the center clear specifically?
Yes.
Yeah, and i- if I could, and again.
Yes.
I'm not an expert and I really don't mean to make myself a witness, but at the same time, I don't believe that we are in a judicial proceeding. And my observation, it was amazingly well organized. I was able to get my car in. Make it all the way over to the area near the storage containers. And very clearly get out of there. And so in my own personal experience, it looks like it's functioning very well.
Does the board have any further questions about the?
You've got traffic movement on the east east side. The opposite side of the building as well.
So, okay, referring to the part where the point six six acres. Is gonna be parking as well as in the proposed gravel parking for point eight two? Is that what you're talking about? Or the other spots that are directly next to the canine enclosure?
I'm talking about the existing gravel parking lot on the large parcel. And access. To that area has been is available on the side of the building opposite the patio area.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, that's how it's been left open and it's also good for a fire lane.
Harry?
I got a question here. Going back to the original permit in two thousand seventeen, how many parking spaces did you have then in two thousand seventeen? What were you allowed in two thousand seventeen?
Seventeen, we didn't even address parking. That application was strictly for, you know, dealt with. Changes to the the brewery site.
Oh, you're right. That was the the amendment to. Do the patio at the time, right? To to change.
At that time. Your committee, the planning board wanted more detailed information by survey. Which we agreed to do in along with the larger parcel.
Curtis?
Yes, Curtis.
The decision from twenty seventeen specifically states seventy four total parking spaces. Of which twenty five will be striped and paved and three, including three handicap spaces. They may not have been part of discussion, but they were still in court encapsulated in the decision because they were depicted on plans in twenty seventeen, I believe.
Was that done?
Yes, I'll, I can show, oh, no, sorry, I thought you meant about the decision.
No, 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 I recognize the decision. I mean, were the, was that paved and striped per the two thousand seventeen decision?
Yeah, Eric, could you describe the parking created in twenty seventeen?
Yes.
It was done.
It was done.
It, it, are those the spots that are on the western side largely?
Could you pull up the map? I can?
Yeah, thank you.
Curtis, I'm sorry.
He's, he's on it.
All right. So on the very left side of your picture, uh, all those were done. Uh, when, uh, my contractor, uh, was doing the paving, utilizing local paving resources, uh, for whatever reason, he made the executive decision. Just Curtis, if you go all the way to the right on the seventeen seventy-six brewing property, he added a little bit more pavement. We actually, which actually helps with our stormwater management. I think it's a very miniscule size. And then Curtis, if you go all the way to the left side and down, uh, yes, right there, that is all pavement right there. Um, so that is, you, you can count the spots. Um, that is the appropriate amount of parking.
I noticed there's three handicap right up toward the opening there area. Those are the three that were required by permit?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Burzens. Harry, any other questions?
Yeah. So we're going from what seventy-fourth to how many?
Uh, approximately a hundred and ninety-nine, including all of the gravel, gravel area.
All right. So we're almost tripling the, you know, the parking. Is that the idea?
I, I will let the math speak for itself.
Okay. Anything else, Harry?
No.
We can park on Fort Hill Road.
All right, all right. All right, hold on, please. Any other board members have any questions about the parking situation as we have it right now? Okay, then let me ask another question in the same vein as, as we wind our way through these different topics. And I'd like to talk about lighting a little bit. I know that there's, uh, some pre-existing lighting requirements that we had earlier. Can you tell me how that's going to change with the new parking areas and what kind of lighting in those parking areas there's going to be?
I, I don't think that's something that we have, uh, worked through at the moment. Uh, I don't think there's at the moment plans to, um, change lighting in the back gravel there is.
Is that because your hours of operation generally end, well, I guess eight o'clock, it gets dark something like now, for instance.
Right.
Uh, you know, this is a time of year where it would get dark. So those back areas in that back gravel. I mean, is there any lighting at all?
Yes, there is lighting. Unfortunately, I guess I'm going to talk to, have to talk to Holmberg and Howe. Uh, the entire property is fairly well, well lit. Uh, and we have it on a timer in order for, because in the previously, in the seventeen, in the two thousand seventeen meeting, there were concerns about light pollution. So we have all the lights on a timer. And I, I think the lights, um, you can ask one of my, my neighbors, but I think we have the lights set off that they taunt, turn off at around ten o'clock. But yes, the entire property is, is lit, uh, appropriately.
Actually, the, the lights are, are shown in that back gravel area on the plan.
See Curtis identifying the point there.
You'll see a legend to the far left side, which shows, uh, uh, let's see. Okay, I'm still looking for lights, but I know you can see him. If you look above the R on the travel lanes, you'll see a circle with, uh, you know, four minds associated with it. You'll also see lights all up along the westerly side. I count one, two, three, four of them, and then one where near where it says travel lane.
Okay. So, I mean, it's clear that, uh, lights were put up. I've driven through there myself. Uh, you know, I know that we talked earlier, as you indicated, Mr. Burzens, uh, in earlier permits about them being downward facing, uh, and about the need to avoid light pollution while providing security, especially for, you know, traffic moving through. Um, that's an issue for me. I think the, it does look like you have lighting. It does look like it's well covered. I think I, I would like to see a, a lighting chart that would indicate what's going to happen in the new parking areas. And it would show the, the illumination and how it declines as it goes into, um, you know, other areas off your property. Um, a lighting chart, I think would be helpful there just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's with regard to safety. Overall, however, I feel that, uh, you know, that's probably good. Does anyone else on the board, uh, have any questions or concerns about lighting?
Just I second that, that, um, we, I would want to see a lighting plan as well, showing the candle, um, the candle lights as it leaves the site on to other properties or the woods.
Okay, I think that's definitely something, Attorney Lane, that we'd want to have added. Um, okay.
Noted.
Question, are you referring to lighting and the proposed parking on the, uh, large parcel, the farm parcel?
Yeah, anything that's got parking involved, I would think should be included. Uh, you know, if you're not going to put lighting there, just let us know and we'll determine if that's, you know, good or bad. But if there's parking there and it's hours like, you know, it's this time of year, it gets dark. And it's my opinion that, you know, maybe that the one above the travel lane where the storage containers are, the one, uh, Curtis was circling his mouse over. Maybe that light, when you give us the lighting chart, will show illumination that covers into that area. Maybe it won't. But I, I do think, you know, you need lighting there. It's, it's.
I was just asking, are you limiting that, uh, requirement to the brewery property or the, the whole thing, the whole area?
Whole area, please.
You've answered the question.
Yeah, anything involved in parking. Thank you. Good question. Okay, um, let's move into some other stuff. It, just again, some basics, and we're, we're just covering this for the sake of the special permit. Um, have you changed, uh, the location of your dumpsters and your waste? And can you point out where that is currently?
We haven't. Sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
We, uh, if you look at, um, the bottom corner, uh, actually, look at the storage containers closest to the brewery. Uh, Curtis, go up a little bit, go down, stop moving, turn right. Dumpster's basically right there.
Okay, so it's not marked on, on this map currently?
No.
Okay. Ha- has that expanded at all? Ha- has, uh?
We have a four, we have a four yard dumpster that gets picked up twice a week.
Okay.
And that has, we've, we've, I've, I've had that same schedule for, uh, uh, probably since the last planning board meeting. Waste management tried to screw me out of some money. But that's a different story.
Okay. So there's been no change since the previous permits in the, uh, size of it. Has the lo-, was the location always in that spot or did you move the location?
We have not moved the dumpster location for the past five years.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think we can safely move on there unless any planning board member has questions about waste on to snow removal. Uh, how are you handling snow removal on the paved and unpaved sections currently?
I purchased a tractor and we do the snow room removal ourselves.
And where do you place the snow?
I get the, the, uh, if, in the various corners of, uh, the property, but I actually, I'm going to try to, I've had a little bit of gripe with one of my employees because he always gets the gravel on the, uh, on the grass and it always messes it up. Because I like to keep my property pretty pristine. So actually, we're going to probably have some snow on the parking lots, uh, this year as to not bleed the gravel that gets, you know, inevitably pushed up into the grass.
So the corners perhaps next to the, the, uh, southern storage container area there, is that a corner where it might go?
Yes, in the bottom left. And then we go, unfortunately, we do take up some parking spots in, uh, if you go directly up. Uh, we do, we do it over there and then ostensibly, we, we do it in the four corners of the property. Uh, at least, at least the brewery property. I, I haven't owned, uh, Birch Family Farm for that long, but, um.
Got it.
I think, uh,
Listen, personal opinion, hasn't been an issue, except for that spring cleanup.
Okay, Chris?
Um, I think as part of, um, uh, the next submittal, I'd like to see a, a snow removal plan where the snow, snow mounds are proposed to be. So that I know that they are still on site. And as they're melting, that storm, that snow removal, that snow melt is staying on site.
Which affects stormwater, of course. So I think that's a valid, uh, very valid request, uh, Attorney Lane, if you could please add that to the list.
Actually, if I could address that as well. Both snow, melting snow and, uh, runoff remains on the property simply because there is a, I won't call it a natural berm. I think it's a result of decades of plowing over the years. But, uh, if one is to look along that left side, yes, right in there, I did have Holmberg and Howe get me some spot grades in there. They never got on this plan, but, uh, I do have that information and I can provide it. I can have, uh, Holmberg and Howe make up a plan with those spot grades on it. But basically what it demonstrates is that along that whole side where the, those parking spaces are, along with the, uh, uh, infiltration trench, the grade just off site is on average at least a foot higher than the grade on site, which means it can't physically drain over on to the abutting property. So, and, and that's, that's been, that's been a premise that I've, I've followed on this whole thing is to keep all drainage on site.
Okay, uh, uh, that's good. Uh, uh, we definitely just want to see kind of noted on the plan, the points where snow is intended to go. But I think that that's good that those berms exist to, you know, to keep that from happening.
I, I can, can, I can confirm that anecdotally as well. I noticed that, um, I checked the site out and there certainly is a, a pretty good berm on that, uh, western side that would prevent stormwater from leaving that side of the site, so.
At that location, okay.
Yeah, Chris, it's not as clear on the plan as it is in person. It's, I, I would actually argue it's probably a couple of feet of, uh, of an elevation gain on that left side. And it's based on the contours of the plan, you would think it's relatively flat, but it's not.
Right. Um, then that's fine for that side of the site, but if it, if there's also snow removal being piled up on the side of the storage containers, I want to know what's going on back there. So I think that's important to know where the snow removal piles will be.
Agreed, agreed. I was just, uh, just, you know, anecdotal.
Yeah, no, fair, fair. Thank you.
Okay, good, very good. All right, let's talk about traffic now. And again, winding our way through topics here, uh, simple stuff first, uh, have the, uh, deliveries changed? The number of deliveries since the last permit? In fact, can you just remind us how often do you get deliveries? How often are things shipped out, uh, in terms of that commercial traffic?
Eric, go on.
I'll speak, uh, but typically two, two trucks leaving with our product every day. And I would argue that, uh, with commercial deliveries, we probably have, one or we, on, on, on any given week, we probably have, um, seven trucks. I've done an expert job of negotiating my futures contracts, um, so I do buy in bulk and, um, uh, with all due respect, I think that my neighbors don't have a concern with, uh, with commercial traffic. They probably have more of a concern with, um, I don't know.
So just to confirm, I think you said two deliveries, and I'm not quite sure I heard that right. Was that per day?
Yeah, I know, we, we, every morning we've got, I, I've got my, I've got three delivery trucks. I've got three box trucks. I've got a total of, uh, three and a half delivery drivers. So, you know, they leave at any time between, uh, let's call it eight and nine in the morning, come back at three o'clock. And, um, and then we do have, you know, the, the, the supply of raw materials. Uh, but I would say that on any given week, we have a total of s- seven to nine, uh, large tractor trailers, uh, come in periodically.
Okay. All right. And then with regard to the, um, you, you know, the users, the people that are coming to the, uh, you know, to enjoy the music, to enjoy the drink, uh, for the tasting, uh, about, uh, do you have any sense of what your daily average is in terms of, uh, not even so much patrons, but the number of vehicles that are coming and going from your property?
Well, I mean, like, do you want me to express this in monetary terms? Because that's probably the best way to do it.
Right now, I'll take anything you got.
All right. On Thursdays, I make a lousy like three hundred dollars. Okay, we don't have that many patrons on, on Thursdays. Okay, on Fridays, eh, let's call it, uh, you know, on a good Friday, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred bucks. Saturday, uh, you know, you, we're doing five beer, we were doing five dollar beers here. I like to tee, heat prices low. Uh, we do like, uh, I don't know, two thousand bucks on a, on a Saturday. Sunday, the weather dependent, depending if the Pats are playing, you know, we'll make, on a good Saturday, it'll be like eight hundred bucks. On a shitty Saturday, it'll be like four fifty.
Okay, thank you. I do, I want to remind you that this is, uh, you know, the entire city of East Hampton is watching this. We should probably try to avoid the.
Apology, sir. Sometimes I forget that I'm not in my own home.
Problem. Um, it is a little difficult to directly, I mean, that does give us something, but it's a little difficult to directly translate that to what's happening with traffic. We have several years now of usage, successful, uh, development of your, of your company. And I, you know, I, I think that it's, it's reasonable to request, um, a, a little bit of data on, on traffic. Is, are there any other metrics that we have? Have you ever tried to count how many cars are coming and going?
Sorry, I just gave you my revenues. Like, well, how, how much more intimate, uh, do you want to, how much more intimate do you want? I mean, like, I'm, I'm telling.
That was intimate, but it wasn't the information that I was after.
Yeah, and I, and I think, uh, I think at this point, we probably don't have the specifics you're looking for, uh, Mr. Zarbus.
I guess we have to, as a board, decide where that stands in the scheme of things. Um, I, I'm not sure we've had a tremendous amount of complaints about traffic. In the beginning, in the first meetings we did, we'll have to wait to hear what the neighbors have to say. Personally, I'm on the fence about it. Board members, do you have any concerns about traffic at this point?
I don't see. No, I mean.
It, it caught my mind just as the spaces tripled. You know, I was like, does that mean that the, the, the amount of vehicles has tripled as well? But I, I'm not sure it would, it would necessitate a whole new traffic impact statement. I was kind of looking through that.
And that's really the question. That's a good question. The thing about this, this, that's unusual is we're not really speculating. We're kind of living it because this was sort of done before any of this has been approved. I mean, those gravel parking areas, they're proposed for special permit, but they're actually in use right now. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're kind of getting that volume of traffic right now. Um, and I, I'm hoping that, you know, when we get to it, when we talk to the, the neighbors, maybe we get a little bit of feedback on that, which will help us determine if we should push further. I'm sorry, uh, Danny, I interrupted you because my thought process took control of me there. Did you want to say more?
That was all I had to say. It was just that I was also just considering, you know, the possibility of, of, of an updated traffic impact statement. That's all. I'm still kind of on the fence about it.
Yeah, me too. Anyone else with traffic? Okay. Well, why don't we talk about the patio now, um, and its expansion? Uh, and get into a little bit more detail there. There is a proposed patio expansion of a little over three thousand square feet. Um, and there's going to be out, there is currently outdoor music there. Uh, there's some spacing, I think you said for COVID, right? The, the tables are spaced a little bit. Did I get that right, Attorney Lane?
I'm gonna have to, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to let Eric, uh, address, uh, uh, seating spacing on patio.
So Eric, I think it's one hundred space, uh, seating that it can do there? Um, and, and is there?
One hundred, I'm so sorry, Mr. Zarbus. One hundred is the estimate, uh, of diners between existing outdoor and proposed patio.
Got it.
All right, let's take a step back too. All right, everyone's all afraid about this three hundred thirty-nine, uh, seating. All right, but that is what, what, what the, I think the fire department gave me as my certificate of occupancy. Okay, as you just saw, you know, my numbers aren't that great. Um. So, you know, we're certainly not having, you know, three hundred and thirty-nine people. Uh. With the COVID restrictions, actually, you know, like, we're, we're, with the introduction of this new patio. I'm actually going to be limiting my seating next year. All right, according to Bree, it doesn't seem like the COVID restrictions. Are going to be relieved anytime soon. Um, so we're actually, you know. I might be better off, you know, not going in front of the planning board and just keeping it the way it is. But we're actually going to try to make it safer and more, you know, it's gonna, it's certainly increase our, everyone, you were a little bit concerned about traffic. But now we've, we, the patio allows for a two-lane road. Uh, you know, you'll be able to pass each other on the, on the new patio. Um, we have, um, it seems as though peo-. People do feel comfortable in our establishment. We do, we did, uh, substantially separate the tables. Um, I know that you guys don't think I obey the rules, but, um. Uh, we do take the COVID restrictions quite seriously. We're not looking for an increase of our certificate of occupancy. Um, we just need more space in order to accommodate, uh, this pandemic that unfortunately we're still in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I have a good sense, I think, of the patio, and I know that there's live music there. One of the things I wanted to talk about. And Attorney Lane brought this up earlier, is the noise issue, uh, that's there, specifically live music. Spreading down toward the Arcadia. Um, now, I'm going to be perfectly candid. Uh, and I think the board needs to pitch in on this as well, but during the earlier two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen meetings. Uh, we discussed noise, uh, and the Plexiglas barrier was brought up. Uh, and was put on to the first permit. And then when you came back for two thousand seventeen. Um, I personally didn't much care for the idea of it continuing to be in there. But it got kept because frankly, you guys offered to keep it in. I'm not a big, I personally don't think it'll do much, uh, or it's gonna be particularly helpful. Um, but it got kept in and was supposed to be put in, and to my knowledge, it has not been put in. Uh, which is a violation, you know, so that, that's an issue. A discussion about noise and a discussion as to why it wasn't done. And still, if it's something that the board wants to continue to have done. Uh, so I think at this point, let's focus solely on noise.
All right, I'm gonna speak on.
Go ahead.
Uh, you're muted, Eric.
All right, I'm gonna speak on this one. All right, so, all right, remember when we originally, all right. So we used to have, on a nice, on a nice day, we used to have music. Uh, on the front patio. We did not, um, we did not have the back patio. All right, and this, having music on the front patio annoyed, uh. All my resi- all my closest residents on Fort Hill Road. In order to accommodate that, we do not use that front patio for any sort of music. That was where the Plexiglas was installed, and actually I did install Plexiglas. Um, however, now, um, having Plexiglas in order to, um, mute people just sitting on the front porch. That is, in, in quite honesty, the most quiet place, uh, in the entire brewery. Um, so there was a little bit of a miscommunication of, uh, you know, what your desires. Were. Uh, there. There's absolutely no reason to install Plexiglas on that front patio. Uh, we don't play music in there.
So I think that the intention was in the two thousand seventeen permit. The reason it was kept in is that it would be moved, according to the discussion from the video recording of the two thousand seventeen meeting. Is that it would be moved, that Plexiglas, uh, or reinstalled on the new, uh, west-facing patio side. Comment on that, Mr. Bursons?
Uh, that was, I, I may have misunderstood that, but I'm pretty sure that I would be the only. Uh, brewery in New England that is, uh. Ah, maybe, may, Owen Zerratt wanted me to encapsulate the entire brewery in Plexiglas, uh, but that, that was. All right, let's be honest here. The back patio only, uh, irritates one neighbor. Okay, and she is a quarter mile away. If you, if you stand anywhere in front of the brewery. I would, I would, I would like, I, you know, in, in all honesty, let's ask like, you know, Mr. Knible. Um, you know, does he really hear the music? Okay, because, you know, when I, when I'm in my, in my house in, uh, in the center of town, I live two blocks away from Big E's. You know, sometimes depending on how the wind blows, you know, I'll hear the, uh, I'll hear the train or ninety-one. Okay, so.
Okay, I understand.
So I think the, I think that all, in all honesty, you have to ask the people on Fort Hill Road. Because truthfully, I don't think that they hear the music when the music's in the, and, you know, it's being, it's being blocked by the silos. It's being blocked by the building. It's being blocked by my pump track.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bursons. Um, I think I understand that point of view. Uh, I think there's a couple of things that happened. I think you're absolutely right. We need to get to, and we will soon, talking to the public about that experience. And we have a lot of feedback that they've submitted that we'll need to go through. Um, I wanted to refer to one other piece in this discussion, uh, and that is, um, our zoning ordinance, uh, ten point two. Point seven. Uh, and that is really, we don't have a noise ordinance in East Hampton. Uh, but we do have this one, um, you know, this one piece of information. Um, is that something you can bring up, please, Curtis, so I can just read it out real quick? Um, see if you have it.
Give me one second.
I have it as ten point two point seven, the noise ordinance says excessive noise at unreasonable hours. Shall be required to be muffled so as to not be objectionable due to the intermittent beat frequency, shrillness, or volume. Now, that's a part of our ten point two environmental performance standards. We don't have a noise ordinance in East Hampton, which means other than that. It defaults to the state's, you know, requirements for timing. So our own thing essentially says that excessive noise at unreasonable hours needs to be muffled. Uh, now, you know, right off the bat, this becomes, you know, given that that's the, the issue, right off the bat, the. The question is, you know, what's an unreasonable hour? Uh, that's something the board needs to discuss. Does anyone else on the board, knowing about this ten point two seven? Um, want to comment on this at this point, or would you prefer to wait till after the, um. The abutters have spoken?
I, I don't mind commenting on it now, since you have it up, and you basically referenced something that I was researching on my own as well. The, uh, basically just the noise pollution policy interpretation from the state DP. Um, they essentially just describe it as ten decibels above ambient. Um, I still haven't seen any, uh, definitive time restrictions based on the state code. Um, so that's something, again, that's not clearly defined in our local ordinance as well. But I was actually going to propose the idea of, you know, um, basically. We have, you know, Mr. Lane and Eric, and then we've got, you know, um, Ms. Fisher and Mr. Wilga. Kind of having contradictory, uh, accounts of what's going on. So as an engineer. Um, and, and looking at some state code here, I was gonna propose perhaps a noise study that just shows. The ten decibel above ambient is not being, uh, violated, you know, with some quantitative data. Would perhaps maybe put arrest to some of this contentious issue here. Um, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks of, of that thought.
But, uh, I got just the. Some bands play louder than others, you know what I mean? You're gonna, you're gonna take this test and it may be one band and. Another band is gonna be much, much louder. How do you, uh, reconcile that?
I mean, not to mention that this is industrial zoned. I mean, it's unfortunate that there's residential nearby, and this certainly isn't the first time. That this board has gotten involved in these discussions, you know, O'Neill Street comes to mind. Where we've actually had to stand out there with decibel meters on our phones and finally came to the conclusion that we are not experts. Well, you know, we are not qualified to determine, uh, you know, what's too loud and what's not too loud by, by our own measure. So it's really got to be a decision on our part of, are we going to decide that in an industrial zone area, a band that can't play past eight o'clock. Is something that we want to, you know, have a, a noise limit to or not? The only thing I can think to do is some sort of, you know, build in a condition. Uh, you know, other than requiring what you just said, Danny, uh, you know, which is a study, which I think will essentially kill outdoor music. Uh, the only other thing I can do is to put a, a criteria in that. You know, somehow we'll have to wordsmith it, that volume be limited, that, that, you know. Or maybe you, you even require acoustic or something like that, but personally, I don't like it. Personally, I think that, and, and I want to hear from the neighbors. But, but it's my opinion that, uh, that. The, I went there during a, a performance and I drove down the street, you know, pa- past the, uh. Arcadia all the way down, past the house in question. The sound that I heard and the sound that I heard in the video. Um, which I think we might want to listen to in a moment here. Uh, can you bring that video up, please, of the sound playing, uh, Curtis? While he's doing that, the sound I heard was about half of the ambient noise of my house here in the city. With lawn mowers and chainsaws and babies crying and couples fighting and people walking and laughing, kids playing in pools. I was like, this is a problem. It made no sense to me. Uh, so, so this is a hard sell for me, but one of the other neighbors did say, and I think we'll need to read that in record too, that. That motorcycle sounds right next to their house were very loud, and that's more concerning to me, uh, on the, on the noise end of things. That that, you know, that's a big concern, and we have to have a whole discussion there. For right now, I want to keep it on the music side. We'll get to the motorcycle side later. Um, but that's just my opinion. I, I don't know where anyone else on the board is, Chris?
So I, I would tend to agree. I think that, you know, for live music, just like any other, um. Venue in any other town, you can put on restrictions to the time limits of when that music is happening. So that it doesn't, um, impact the butters. I'm fine with that. But I think that, you know, that we, we also, uh, received into the record some photographs of. Bands or people, not, maybe not even bands, um, but, or people playing instruments in the front of the building. So I think that as part of this noise restriction, we could, um, and, and, and I don't know the time, maybe that was before two thousand seventeen. So maybe these are photographs before we relegated the music to the side of the building and not the front. Um, we can discuss that when we look at the photos and the timestamps. But, um, I think that, you know, I, I agree that if it's on the side of the building, and as we discussed, and it's facing away from the, the residents. Um, so that the noise is going into the woods there, I think that's, um, that's acceptable to me with the, um, noise restriction in place. Yeah, or some operation restrictions, I should say.
Attorney, one second, please. I just want to note, um, Ms. Fisher, I do see your hand up. I'm going to be doing, um, public comment. All in one big loop, so I will, I will be getting to, and everyone's gonna have a chance to speak. Um, as soon as we're done kind of like laying out our initial conversations, well, we won't be making decisions at this point until the public has had a. Chance to speak. Uh, uh, go ahead, Attorney Lane.
Thanks, and this is kind of following up on, uh, what Chris had just said in, um. I, I think, um. Again, I've had one experience on one evening, but it was a pretty similar experience to you, Mr. Zarvis. And I think what's also important here is to, um, read ten point two seven. Uh, of the ordinance, uh, as a complete sentence and not focus on the first two words, which are excessive noise. It's excessive noise at unreasonable hours. And so, um, to me, it seems like there's got to be a way here. Uh, to allow for live music, which is a big, uh, boost to, uh, commercial. Operations and the economy in general right now. This is, you know, of course, this is not specific to East Hampton. This is happening in all, um. All towns and villages right now in the area. Uh, and so, again, to me, it just seems like. We have to consider excessive noise at unreasonable hours. Um, uh, um, and yes, uh, I think as Ken was saying, you know. The sound of a guy with an acoustic guitar plugged in, uh, is not going to be the same thing as a full band with drums. Uh, and electric instruments. Uh, but at the same time, if they're being limited to, uh, reasonable hours, and it seems to me that. Seven, uh, eight PM in the evening, uh, termination would be very reasonable. Um, regardless of the size of the band or the instruments in it. Um, so again, I just really did want to stress that, that we're. We're reading ten point two seven as a complete sentence and not focusing just on, uh, the excessive noise, uh, aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, before we go on, Curtis, do you have that video?
Yes, but I'm struggling to share audio on my, uh, my, my city, my city-issued laptop.
Then, then let's, let's skip that and we'll just make a note that there is a video showing from one of the, and I'm sure they'll speak later in this meeting, showing from one of the. Um, I, I, I shouldn't call them in a butter because they're actually the property that's either somewhere between a quarter and a half mile away. Uh, showing this sound, um, from their property, which I recommend that everyone go to the city website, uh, and, and check that out and be able to. Uh, to see. Uh, Curtis, is, is there a link? Maybe you can put in chat for that. Um. Okay, so. I think at this point, unless any of the other board members want to, uh, talk about this, that we probably better wait for public comment to go further on that. Discussion. Um, and I want to just touch on things first before we go forward. Uh, Curtis, if you could bring the map back. Or Curtis, he's jumping all over the place. I think I'd like to talk about, um. The. Some of the stuff that's happening on Birch Family Farm, um, the. Existing fenced personal recreation zone, point six nine acres. Also the one to the right that's so much larger that goes up against the bike path. Um. And then we have the fenced-in canine enclosure. These are the stuff that are on the Birch Family Farm side of things. Um, and also there's one thing I want to bring up too. Uh, on the very, um, northwest corner. Where you can kind of see four parking spaces there. I seem to recall when I drove by that there was some kind of structure in the back there. It almost looked like a bike, but it was overgrown. Is, is there something else up in that area? Uh, that would be all the, the top left of the map.
Top, wha- which area?
Right where his mouth, his cursor is going over. It seemed like there might be some sort of bike.
Yeah, I, I built some, I built some BMX jumps. Uh, that, those were done like six years ago. Uh, I think that, let's, let's take a step back here. Um, you know, I know I may sound hypocritical here. But we got a, a, a town full of breweries and pot shops, okay? There's very little recreational zone, um, in, in this community. And, um, you know. I, 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 I get high off of, uh, of jumping my bike and exercising. All right, I donated ten thousand dollars to the city of East Hampton, okay, to, um, maintain the Hendrick Street trails. But, uh, the mayor obviously doesn't seem to like me that much, all right, and that project never went through. Okay, I've also donated, I have, I, but we also built a, a, a big bike track in, um, in Berkshire East. Okay, we built forty-foot jumps. My goal in life is to jump a hundred feet on my bicycle, okay? I, with all due respect, I wanted to build a house and a ballet studio, okay, on this industrial property. But I was told, no. Eric, you have to obey the rules, okay, and you can't build a house on industrial property.
I, I think we better focus just, just a little bit, uh, uh, on, you know, getting through, talking about these specific zones and, and how we're going to, uh, handle them. Is or is there not, you, I think you just said there is a bike thing up there. Why isn't it on the plan? Is it, is it something you're still using?
I'll speak to that. The, uh, there is a. Yes, right up in that upper corner, Curtis. Well, all right, where, where you've got book and page. In the woods, you know, there is a. A, uh, as I recall, there were two or three hills. You know, just piles of loam. I believe that they're all overgrown at this point. And, uh. I think there was some, uh, small wooden structure next to the first hill, something like that.
Like a ramp.
It's in the woods. It wasn't considered to be of any consider, you know. Reasonable consideration for what we're dealing with, so I didn't ask the surveyors to pick up that kind of information.
Is it in use?
Beg your pardon?
Is it in use?
No, it is not because the town has stifled, uh, my ability to use my own property. It is not in use.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's move over toward the canine enclosure. Um. Okay, so this is on industrial property. And, you know, my sense of these things, and I, I want to talk to, um, I, I wouldn't mind getting a little bit of feedback from either Curtis or Jeff. But my sense on these things is that as we, we look at these personal recreation zones or, you know, we're talking about bike ramps or motorcycle ramps. A canine use, as we go through the uses that is in the, in the zoning. Um, there's kind of a question that is even beyond if these, if these uses exist in there. As to whether or not they're for, you know, is it for commercial? Is it not for commercial? This seems like a rabbit hole. Um, and, and it almost seems to me as if, if we were able to have some assurances. About noise, uh, about visual flagrancy, uh, the, the standard kind of, uh, things that we'd go through. That maybe if we, and, and of course I should add that they're only for personal use, that there's no. Uh, no other people are going there. This is in a situation where, where you're inviting the public to come over from Fort Hill into those. Into those enclosures, which you're considering for private use. That maybe if we could focus on just getting your agreement as conditions that. Will maintain certain noise standards, will maintain certain visual flagrancy standards. We don't have to worry too much about use because they're personal. The, Curtis, Jeff? Do either of you want to weigh in on that at all?
I mean, I'll jump in. I think, you know, I think you need to hear a little bit more from the applicant in terms of. The nature of the intended use over, over the next, you know, in, in the course of the future. I think you'll probably hear, and it's, it's been, it's been discussed. Um, in various settings, and I'm, I'm aware of a letter that was transmitted out to neighbors that, you know, sort of had a different, uh, idea of the uses. You know, starting in 2019. So I think, you know, I think you'll hear that later. You know, there, there was consideration of a public dog park and a BMX course available to people. So now it's, it's different, you know, I, I, the proposal is different for personal use and I, we just haven't heard from the applicant, the nature of these. Uses, the things you mentioned, noise and kind of frequency of use and that kind of stuff.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Um, can the applicant comment on that as the use question?
If, if I may, if, if I may, uh. Since I did prepare this plan. If you'll note that, uh, these various recreation areas are for personal use. They are not for commercial use. And before I put that on the plan. I made absolutely sure that that was the case. And this is what I was told, what I was assured. And as a result, this is nothing more than, uh, you know, personal recreation areas. And it certainly doesn't represent any kind of a disturbance to the neighborhood, in my opinion, for what that's worth. But it is very definitely personal rather than recreational use. And any discussions other than that over the past few years are moot. Uh, it's a moot point. Uh, we've gone beyond that. This is strictly for their own use.
And I, I, I'd like to second that and just, you know, go a bit further and. In the same vein, Mr. Zarvis is just staying focused on this application. Uh, I had the same experience. Uh, my narrative is based on similar discussions. Uh, these are for personal family use, um, by the owners of the property. Um, I'm, 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 uh. You know, I know what the zoning ordinance says, uh, that this is industrial zone land and these are recreational purposes. And certainly because of the lawsuit, uh, for enforcement, we've included them here. Um. I, I understand that there could be concerns about stormwater and earth that has moved to create these. Um, but it, I would think in the end, we'd come up with a pretty minimal impact. If the board is looking for assurances, I think I'd like to just understand better. Um. What are the assurances? What are the limitations they'd be looking to have the applicant agree to? Um, and then, uh, frankly, I'd like time to consider that a bit more. It's obvious that we're going to need to continue, uh, and that we're going to need to amend the submissions a bit. Uh, and I'd like to pick this up, uh, at a continuance if that is the case.
That's reasonable and I can just tell, I, I'll ask the board this, but first I'll tell the things that I would be looking for. Uh, an agreement will put in, you know, a condition that should the uses change, uh. It to, to be, you know, not personal or something else that would obviously trigger a special permit process. I'm very concerned about the no, uh, motorcycle noises that, you know, I, I want some assurances that there, there are certain hours that'll be maintained for that. Uh, specifically, as you pointed out in our 10.27, hours are a big piece of what ordinance we do have for motorcycle noises. And I think that, you know, we need to, I'd, I'd want to see that focused on. Uh, you know, I worry that that is a real nuisance to the neighbors immediately nearby. Um, you know, but I'm not sure what hours for personal use that's happening.
And maybe, and, and maybe quantity, how many dogs, how many motorcycles?
Yeah, good point. Uh, Eric, if you could just hold off a second, please. Um, yeah, these all to me sound like the reasonable questions and reasonable discussion. I would love the, uh, the time to consult a bit more with both my client and Mr. Swanson, uh, and then we can. I, again, I think address this in detail at the inevitable continuance that's going to happen here.
Totally good. I like that. Any other board, uh, Danny?
Yeah, just, um, just more of like a graphical thing. Um. Could, could we just demarcate, maybe just draw some kind of a dotted line on the plans that just demarcate what is the personal. Portion of the site plan and what is considered the, you know, part of the brewery, just. I know we're combining all of this into one permit, which is great, but there are. You know, there are obviously clearly things that are, are for the owner's personal use and then other things that are intended for the public use. And I think just a demarcation on the plan might just communicate that a little bit better if possible.
Great idea.
If I'm doing an additional plan, most definitely. What my inclination would be is to simply give that, uh, dotted line demarcation. Around the parking, the only thing that's on the large eight point eight acres. That relates to the brewery is the parking alongside that, uh. Dog fenced in area that's on the, uh, yes. And, uh, the large proposed parking area. In, yes, in that area. And I would also designate, uh, a good portion, I'd run my dot dash line right through about the middle of the, uh. Uh, retention basin because it's largely used for that parking area. As well as the recreation. But that way you would have what you're looking for, and that is the portion of the. Large parcel, the family farm parcel, which is basically leased to, used by the. Brewery for various purposes. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's basically it. Just, just some way to show the two different, um, the two different kind of. Uses. Yeah, I guess that's it, Chris. And I guess my only other question would be. Uh, I know that there's a lease agreement between these two parcels. I know they're both in, um. In, in Eric's family in some regard, but they are two separate entities, I believe. Uh, I'm no real estate expert and they are two separate parcels. Is there, uh, any right of way agreement? Because to me, for someone to use the recreation on the Birch Family parcel, the only access is through the 1776 parcel. So is there an easement that's going to be granted? So that there can be access that's separate from 1776 or are you going to propose a new curb cut and secondary entrance for Birch Family Farm?
Address that.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Gary.
Uh, that was one of the first things I talked to Mr. Burzens about. And that was for that large parcel, uh, applying for a separate curb cut. On the Fort Hill Road. And, uh, he made it very clear to me that he didn't want any of his cars, his traffic from his facility. Going out in that direction, you know, at night with headlights on, especially high beams. Which are really truly going to irritate people. I've seen that situation before. Hmm. And, uh, he declined the idea of, uh. You know, having a separate curb cut. Made it very clear that if all these, all of his traffic is going to go down that driveway, which basically only aims in the woods. It doesn't bother anybody. So that's the way we left it. And along those lines, I would certainly recommend that, uh. The, if it's not there already. That the lease agreement includes a provision for access through 1776 property. Absolutely.
I, yeah, that's very thoughtful. Okay.
And we do, the, the, there is an agreement, but we are actually, we are based on the circumstances and the change in circumstances. We are mending the lease, uh, and that's something else we could submit, uh, at the continuance.
Okay, Jeff, I think you have your hand up.
Thanks. Um, I just kind of, I guess I just wanted to latch on to this discussion because I think it's. It's a good discussion. You guys already kind of came up with the list. I'm sure Attorney Lane was taking the notes and the types of things for that personal use. Um, I think the two other things I just wanted to air out and have potentially have the board decide what you want on the list is, um. Now, let me check my notes here. Um, so, you know, we were running calculations and had a lot of discussion about the parking. And, you know, I think we would argue that all of the parking shown is for the brewery. So I would think that that's another. Um, item that we would have to consider and want to be pretty clear. From some point where a permit is issued moving forward is that. As of my understanding of this, there is no parking associated with the recreational use. So, you know, if there was an evolution of that in the future. The parking shown isn't really going to be adequate for that. So, you know, we're, we're trying to acknowledge that everything is for the brewery right now. So moving forward, if there is a shift in the, in the nature of these uses, we, we would be wanting to be real clear. We weren't very clear in the 2017 permit. So we got to be clear moving forward that I would say there's another delineation piece about parking. We're, we're, we're not considering any of that parking for the recreational use. All for the brewery. So I just want to, I just wanted to air that out a little bit. Um, I think we're heading in the right direction in, in, in general terms. The only other item related to the farm property is, is special events. So I think, you know, it was pretty observable, um, during the, the more recent event that cars were kind of doing just what Mr. Swanson said was not going to happen, which was. For, you know, I think I drove by, I'll admit that I drove by to take a peek. Um, and for full disclosure, we also took a peek at the event at Arcadia. Um, but I think cars were traversing off of Fort Hill, you know, as a secondary means of egress. And I think, um, I didn't go onto the property. So I don't know if the dog run was being used. But I think we, we need to kind of think about special events or Mr. Lane, I'd like your client to kind of. Think about special events and, and how those interact with the things we're talking about. It doesn't need to be addressed at this moment, but I think.
Yeah, right.
It's a, it's an issue. So I think without it, I'll, I'll stop with that was.
Would we consider like a condition that essentially says, you know, the client agrees that during special events. Precautions, cones, something to prevent parking overflow onto those properties. Is that the kind of thing that you would be looking for there, Jeff?
Well, I think, you know, understanding how the property is used during a special event and then understanding how it fits here. I think would happen first, Mr. Zarvis, and then I think you talked about that. Yeah. We just don't really know how the, the space functions for a special event, and I think that would be kind of useful. You know, this is the kind of stuff that we would have discussions with applicants as they're proposing to do things. So, so I think we're just kind of, we're just retroactively trying to, to capture the, the way the property gets used. Uh, we have an opportunity to kind of, to talk that through.
With all due respect.
No, um, good, Eric, why don't you hold off? Cause we do not have to address this today and I don't think we're going to. There's too many specifics to this and I think, uh.
When we apply for a special permit, okay, we address these things. Now, we applied for a special permit, uh, not a special permit, but a, uh, a one day permit for the dog park. Or not the dog park, barks and brews. Okay. That is addressed in the, uh, that one day permit.
Yep.
Okay. So I think like.
So, uh, uh, again, yeah, I, I think we can address these things, uh, and, uh, our submissions for the continuance.
Okay, thank you. I do think, you know, Jeff, Jeff brings up a good point and Eric, I thank you for your response as well. Excuse me, Mr. Burzens, I thank you for your response as well. Um, basically, uh, we do want to hear more just about, you know. Obviously you want to have these kinds of special events. I think you'll tell us more at our next meeting. So. Uh, I think it's time to dive into stormwater. What can you tell us? Uh, do you, are there any specific questions that Chris or Danny want to lead off with?
I'll let you start, Danny.
Um, yeah, I just, uh, let's see here. So you, you, is there currently any water? You said there's no water leaving the site, but then there was like the, there was this reduced stormwater flow of 41%. Um, that you, you claimed from the, from basically taking the existing grassland of the Birch Family Farm and then adding the. Disturbed areas for the bike path, the retention pond and, and everything we've mentioned so far. What is, can you just clarify that for me? Cause, cause to me, I'm interpreting that as. You've got water leaving the site and now I, I do like the retention pond and you're just telling me you're capturing it there. Um, I, is that, is that the case?
Hydraulic calculations are a theoretical thing, uh. And I have to follow the rules that are set forth. This is a very relatively flat piece of property. It only has a 1% grade. Uh, heading in a northwesterly direction. You can see the contours there.
Hmm.
Uh, but it's only 1% pitch. It's a grassed field. Uh. But the, uh. Coefficient, the runoff coefficient that I've got to follow. If I can remember correctly, it was about, um. Yeah. Point oh three five is the coefficient. The, uh, roughness, Manny's roughness coefficient for calculating the, the flows through here. But basically. Theoretically, water has to leave this, and I'm only talking about the eight point eight acres. That it flows off that property during these very infrequent storm events. Now I've heard from your highway superintendent. That, uh, he is seeing, if you look at the. Uh, the larger fenced in area at the upper right corner, right in, in that area. Yes, that water has flowed off that field. Onto at least the side of Fort Hill Road. Now, some of the water from that site naturally, this is. Uh, pre-construction. This is before any of this stuff is built. Some of it obviously has to go on to the, uh, brewery property. And it does. What I'm doing, what I'm doing is by putting in that large, uh, stormwater retention area. Which by the way is very, very, uh, the site slopes are only 20%. It's five to one. So nobody can get hurt in it. But it's a large shallow area in order for safety sake. What I'm doing is taking all of the water that would have gone. Offsite. And when I say offsite, a good portion of it would be going on to the brewery property as well as Fort Hill Road. But I'm taking the bulk. I'm actually, I'm taking everything from that, uh. How best to show it? The, the, uh. The swale, uh, no, down. If we go down, I'm taking everything from the. Well, let me look at the plan here. Yeah, everything from that swale on the northerly, the Fort Hill side. Of the, uh, proposed recreation area, the one point eight four acre area. Everything in a straight line, if you go bring it right to the brewery property. All of that is being diverted now, or, uh, you know, the proposal is it would be diverted. Into that large, uh, retention basin, meaning that all that water that used to go offsite is. You know, it's going to. What was it? About forty percent of that water. Uh, of what used to go, uh, offsite. Forty percent of it is captured onsite and will regenerate the groundwater through that, uh, retention basin.
Okay. The reason I ask, have you considered the possibility of requiring a Nipte's stormwater permit? Based on the state guidelines for industrial water leaving a site. Um, and as a point source is that, was that been evaluated or determined that was not necessary?
That industrial water, it may be an industrial zone, but this is all water that, that, uh, gutter. Around the proposed area is all grassed. Uh, all we're doing is moving the water. You know, allowing it all to infiltrate instead of just a good portion of it.
Okay. Another question I had where you had for your intensity on. Which page? Is it page four? You've got different values that you used compared to page five where. Where you're doing your pre and post development stormwater for the farm parcel and then you're doing. Um, basically you're doing some calculations to contribute to the retention basin, proving that. And I agree with you. You've got a gr- a great amount of extra volume for that retention basin. I, I really like that design. I was just curious. I know for that page five, I, I was able to pull the same values from the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So I, I agree with those that you used. I was just curious where the one point six, two point nine and five point four values for your intensity came. That you used on page four. I wasn't able to, to find those values.
Intensity is lower because if you look at the time of concentration on page four. Your TC, uh, based on the. Uh, using that, uh, the C coefficient, the Manning's, uh, co- C coefficient of three five. Gives me thirty minutes. Gives me a thirty minute time span, which puts us into a lesser, a lower intensity storm. It's the TC of thirty minutes that does that.
Yep. Okay. The, I can, that, that checks out. Thank you for that clarification. And my only other comment right now. Was just the proposed southerly parking area, your runoff coefficient of point five, assuming that's for the gravel. I, I mean, I would probably assume a little bit higher than that, maybe somewhere in the magnitude of point seven or point eight. Especially the characteristics of gravel as it kind of ages and compacts as a parking lot. I've ran the calc. It doesn't significantly, um, it doesn't change your design for your retention pond, but I would say. If you could reissue and just run the calc with, with a point seven or a point eight value, I think it's more representative of gravel. And then.
Maybe I came up with was closer to the point five. Uh, I will grant you that as time goes on. When you, when you, and I had this discussion, by the way, I, I've gone over all of this with, uh, your city engineer. And, uh. The, we agree that, uh, gravel in time. It gets worn by the tires and it grinds together and it becomes less pervious than, uh. When it's fresh, when it starts out. So I have no problem. Working this, reworking this. With a higher number. Uh, and I can easily handle it within, uh, the large area that we've got for the, uh, stormwater retention basin. So I, I, I have no problem reworking that, but I'm, I think point seven is pushing it.
I mean, some states can treat it exactly like asphalt with a point nine. So. Yeah, you know, or Chris knows as well, or point nine five even. So. You may think it's pushing it. Other people think that's point seven's conservative. So.
Uh, I, I want to let you guys say, just give me one second. I think I found a great segue here where I can get one piece done. Um, there was, uh, you mentioned the city engineer, Dan Murphy. There was a memorandum that he sent out, and this is probably a good place to just read it in. Where he said regarding the Birch Family Farm Stormwater, I have reviewed the following documents. Uh, one, the letter dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty one to the Eastern Planning Board and two, the site and stormwater grading plan for seventeen seventy six Brewing Company. And Birch Hill Family Farm dated nine three, excuse me, nine thirty twenty one with two sheets. And he says, this office has reviewed the above referenced documents and offers the following comments. One, the stormwater calculations are reasonable for, for the planned use. The proposed retention basin appears to be adequately sized for the expected one hundred year runoff. From the proposed personal recreation area and the southern gravel parking area. Two, he says. Consider extending the swales on the east end of the personal recreation area to prevent ponding. Three, he says, check with the COMCOM to see if there's any jurisdiction of the existing stormwater basin. Interesting. And lastly, he says. I last reviewed the stormwater calculations for the Port Hill site in May of two thousand seventeen. Have any updated calculations been prepared for the improvements made on the site and the site since then? And I just wanted to read that into the record to make sure that we get comments on those.
Actually, uh, I agree fully with him on the, the, uh. The, uh. The ditch, the, around that large, uh, recreation area. I want to keep a pitch on that. I do not want to have stagnant water. Uh, you know, at that upper end. In fact, when I laid it out, it, uh. I was able to get more of a pitch than what it shows on there right now. I think I'll put some spot grades on that. So there won't be any question. That we'll have our, uh, you know, a, a good pitch all the way around.
Are we nearing a point where we need a new stormwater plant?
Well, that, that's what I was going to request that. Um, basically I, I see. A lot of these, a lot of the new areas developed here were covered by Mr. Swanson in, in this, uh, memo dated September thirtieth. And, um, the calculations kind of piecemeal and just kind of, uh. Look at each individual improvement separately, but I think the site is now so different than the last. Comprehensive stormwater, um, kind of design report, calculation report. That Mr. Swanson would have all of this material, essentially has all of this material, but if we could just request a cut. Kind of compile it and review the site again as a whole. Uh, I think it kind of warrants it based on the additional, you know, all of this, um, taken into account together. Um, one additional thing, the three test pits that were done in the perk test. Um, I'm happy to hear that it's type A soil. I'm happy to hear that it's very free draining. That is excellent news. Do we have, can you please provide that data that shows it? And, and was there a witness to a test? Yeah. Could that be included in, in, um, additional?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see that, uh, test report.
Little test report. It's my personal observation from having about fifty, fifty years experience of examining soil. But, uh, no, it's, uh, I do have soil samples. Which I could have run, but, uh. I didn't feel it was appropriate or necessary to go to that extent or expense for my client. It's very good medium to coarse sand. There isn't really any gravel to speak of in it, but it's a pretty fine, you know, well graded, uh, sand. And it is evidenced by the. The, the fact that it even in, uh. That small existing retention basin on the Fort Hill or the, uh. The farm property, that dries out. The, all of the water that's collected in there, uh. Is, uh, infiltrates into the subsoil. And, and I point out again that, uh, the, the ground, the water table. Is below twelve feet. We didn't get anything even moist when we dug out at that depth.
Mr. Swanson, and I apologize, Chris and Danny, I'm sure you have more, but, uh, you just. Um, documented some of your, your own expertise, uh, i- in putting out that data. Um, can, can you just, I failed to get this from you in the beginning and it's really just for the record and maybe to help explain this. Can you tell us a little bit about your expertise? Wha- what, what is your title and, and your experience in this business?
I'm a professional engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Have been for roughly fifty years. And, uh. In that time, I've. I'd, I'd have to really sit down and start listing the kinds of things. I've forgotten most of what I've done already. But, uh, I have a great deal of experience with groundwater, water wells. In, in evaluating the soil that we're, you know, we're pulling out of, uh, test pits. And, uh. You know, borings, uh. Just generally, and, and I've seen, and I've done some, uh, uh, onsite, uh, water transmissive. Yeah, transmissivity permeability testing basically. But I didn't feel because of the, my. You know, observation of the soil, the nature of the soil itself. That I didn't feel it was necessary to go those additional steps. Okay, I still, I have the soil samples if anybody wants to see them. I could go over them with, uh, with your city engineer if you like.
Let's talk about that a little bit. I, I think that it's, I mean, it's more even than just, uh, those soil samples. It's really about all the different changes. You know, some of the ground was built up higher, some of it's lower, uh, you know, a lot of new acreage was added overall. Um, you know, personally, I feel that Danny's right and, and Chris, they're right that this does warrant. You know, a new, a new stormwater, um, assessment here. Danny and Chris comments?
Yeah, I, I think a comprehensive stormwater assessment would be very helpful. I, one, I have a question for Danny to, to maybe help me with this. Um, the storage containers, um, the applicant is stating that the storage containers are. A non, it's that it's, um, it's permeable. That, that square footage because they're on six by six timbers. What is your experience of that? I would think it's still, personally, I would think it's, that is an impermeable spot, space because those, um. Those trailers are stacked up, they are steel and yeah, they're on six by six timbers, but that's an impermeable space.
What, what are your? It's a gray area, Chris, because they do get the credit for actually having the available per, um. Permeable space underneath and I have witnessed they are up on timbers for.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a gray area because you're right that the rain is not, is not necessarily permeating. Right away. It's like a house and a roof, right? But they've got the space underneath. We'd have to look at the grading, but from my experience, from my recollection on the site. Um, that water does kind of pitch towards the back where there is a swell. Actually, actually behind those containers is a huge. Um, like a big French drain that's not really depicted well, uh, almost where it says test pit two backfilled with wash stone. That's kind of a, a, kind of a nice area for infiltration. So I'm not concerned with those containers adding. Uh, believe it or not, uh, believe it or not, I'm not concerned with the containers adding to the impermeability. I think that's a kind of a wash. So.
Any other?
Okay.
Questions or comments regarding stormwater?
No.
Harry or Ken, anything you want to add? Okay. So I think the sense I got is that the board is leaning toward wanting a new stormwater.
Right. Yeah. Along those lines, uh, before you move on, could, uh. Could I suggest that, uh, i- in creating this plan and then in, in submitting further to the. Board on it, um. Could we be using, uh, Mr. Murphy's memorandum as a guide and then, um. Seek further kind of, um, review and approval from city engineer. Uh, that if these plans, uh. You know, if we, if in the, if in the new stormwater plans. Uh, Mr. Murphy's questions are met. Um, and answered, uh, that, you know, we are essentially. I guess I would want to understand that the board agreed that we'd be using Dan Murphy's memorandum as the guide for. What we should be doing and addressing in these stormwater plants.
You know, I think Danny raised some good points as well that you should consider and they really, what I took from it is that some things weren't really delineated well. You know, that we're looking for better markings in the stormwater plan that kind of show what's current. So I mean, I agree absolutely with Dan, with the city engineer, with Dan Murphy. Put in there are critical items that need to be addressed and you should focus on that. But I think Danny's items too. Dana, did you want to make specific any points that they should consider in the new stormwater permit to help them? Put that together or Chris?
Going back to my notes. Um.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to, I've been taking fairly diligent notes here and, uh. Uh, happy to see what I can do to outline this, but. I'm happy to hear what you have to say first.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I mean, mostly I was just concerned with the perk data, just because a lot of these, the, a lot of the swells, especially on the, the west side and the, and the backside. I was just concerned with just sizing the hundred year storm and the, the dynamic nature of water going down with water coming in and filling. Um, but I, obviously the retention pond was sized statically, which is great. Um, it's very oversized. I was just concerned with more adding that perk data, but if we don't have it, it's just visual. That, that's all we have to go on, I guess.
Actually, let, let me a- address that. The, my experience has been that yes, you can go through theoretical analysis on the. You know, the rate of infiltration on the systems, but the systems. Don't retain the same level of, of, of infiltration rate. As when they're new. And what I like to do, and I, it's possible to do it on this particular site. Is to, as you say, plan it on a static basis. And I'm even doing that, that on the, uh. On the west side along that west property line, because. Basically the parking area on one, on one of these severe storms. Is the, a detention area, even on paved surfaces. I've allowed for it to, you know, back up. A few feet onto that pavement. That's where our storage is coming from while the infiltration process is taking place. Now, obviously with the big retention basin, I've done it on the, the large parcel as well. And at that point, it really isn't as awfully significant. As to the rate of infiltration from the pond, from the trenches. Uh, because I know that's all going to change. In fact, one of the things I've got to impress upon my client is that. The, these retention basins are going to fill up. If you look at the one that, uh. Is right at the end of that existing parking area. Uh, you've got to go in there with a machine and get the. Less pervious, uh, topsoil and, you know, the material that's washed in there. Which is retarding the rate of infiltration. You actually got to maintain these things.
Yeah, that's typically part of a maintenance plan and the best management. Yeah, that's typically part of a maintenance plan, and the best management practice is to maintain your. Well, okay, so I guess my concern was that that swell on the west side, depending on, you know, how you're designing it to back into the parking lot. I saw an opportunity for if you had a few hundred year storm events, which could happen in succession, or a very long 24 hour event, that potentially that water could migrate and find its way washing itself down the drive and down into Fort Hill Road. If that swell wasn't sized appropriately or had enough, high enough infiltration.
Actually, it can't. If you look at the drainage areas shown, and this goes back to four years ago, the only water that's going to go down.
Well, I think we need more contours on the, I don't think the contours on the on this map, maybe you're missing some, but it's fairly flat that once it goes beyond, I can't really see. Once it goes beyond that contour of the parking spaces, it's essentially flat until it hits the driveway.
There's a high point. There's a high point in the paving. If you bring that little hand down low, whoop, up, right in that, oh, no, down, right? In that area that has no contours, there is a high point.
Well, I think you need to show it.
Just a little bit above that.
I agree.
It is shown, I did, I did do that analysis back four years ago in 2017, and Dan has seen that. So that really isn't going to change. The hundred year storm, first of all, I'm not concerned about it backing into the driveway too, into the driveway too much, because at a hundred year storm, you're not going to see any business in that. Certainly, nobody's going to be.
Right, but water going down into Fort Hill Road, regardless of businesses, could be an issue. And I think if you're going to have a high point in your design to prove that this won't happen, you should probably show it on your site plan.
Yeah, and I think that goes to Attorney Lane, what I mentioned earlier, is, you know, one of the things we want to see in here is just more detail.
So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. I think as we're rounding almost quarter after eight, that it's a great time to start to hear from the neighbors, the abutters. It looks like I I don't think I'm going to have to put any time, time requirements in because I I don't see too many folk here. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there's anyone for the public that would like to comment on this. You can turn your camera on and raise your hand. You can do, what is it, Curtis, star six or star nine on the phone? Did I have those correct?
Yep. One unmutes you, the other raises your hand.
So if anyone here wants to raise their hand.
Hello?
Ah, okay, there's one, yes, and could you give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Rick Bangham, Rick and Deb Bangham. We live at 39 Clap Street. And I apologize, we're a little late joining here, but I did read all the material before joining. And all I wanted to be heard about is it, my issue was was about the concern about the the noise from the music. I can hear it up here a couple of times a week. It's annoying. We were led to believe that there would be some sort of noise mitigation that would prevent that from being as loud as it is. And it is, you know, on the, on the times when they have bands there, it's it's definitely loud and annoying. And I just wanted to get on the record for saying that, in my opinion, there should be a a sound study of some kind done to try to, you know, get everybody on the same page and understanding what was permitted and what's being allowed and and what's actually happening. So that's all I wanted to say, really. I just wanted to be on record of saying that I can hear the music and it's annoying, and I hope the board will consider consider that in their deliberations.
Thank you very much. So before you go, Curtis, can you bring up the map we've been looking at again? I just want to see if I can, if I'm able to identify which property is yours on that map. It will let Curtis bring it up. And if you could just tell us, on the top of this, there's some numbers. I don't know if you can get that high. Yeah, there you go. Is one of those properties in the top yours?
I'm sorry, I'm calling from the phone. I live at 39 Clap Street.
It's on Platt Street, I'm sorry, I misheard, okay. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. In that case, never mind, I appreciate your comments, sir. All right.
Okay, thank you.
You can shut this down so I can see the, thank you. Anyone else like to comment? I see two participants raise their hands. Let me look at those. It looks like Melissa Crybell, forgive me if I mispronounced that.
It's me, John Conneville, 17 Fort Hill Road. I think we're number seven on your plan there. Perfect. Location. Our issue is with the noise. It mostly always has been. It's it's been mitigated a little bit with it on the side of the building. It's not so loud. I mean, you guys think that setting a time limit is is reasonable, you know, where he shouldn't be going past. But if you're in your house and you hear music that you don't want to hear, that's a quality of life issue for me. And I don't believe that someone can move into my neighborhood and make it so I don't want to live here anymore. Understand? What else can I say?
Well, I I I think we just want to point out too that when Eric did move the bands to the side of building, it actually had a significant, significant mitigating effect on the noise for us. Unfortunately, it had a detrimental effect to neighbors on the other side. But what I would ask that the planning board consider is is other mitigating work, other mitigating efforts that can be made. Potentially, I mean, moving the bands to the side doesn't cost the business owner anything. Even just the positioning of the amplifiers toward the crowd and not toward the residences can potentially have a significant beneficial effect to the residents that are impacted. And while I appreciate that a couple of the board members and Mr. Lane have driven by at times, you know, and didn't believe that the noise was that excessive, you're not here for the six hour timeframe that that music is going on. So if we wish to have an outdoor activity at the same time, but that music is going for six hours at a time, it's actually not, we can't do it. It makes for a very uncomfortable, you know, environment for us. The other point I do want to raise, which was outlined in the in the letter that we drafted to the planning board, and I I don't know if this was brought up or not, but the the soil that was brought in to build all of the jumps for the for the bicycle track and the motocross bike was not native soil. That was actually trucked in from offsite. We saw trucks come in in excess of 50 dump trucks over a period of several weeks. So I don't know how that impacts the stormwater drain offer, if that was even taken into consideration at the time that the plan was done. But I just, I had heard that there was a discussion that and a belief that it was all native soil and it, what we witnessed was it was not, it was all trucked in significant amounts. And to the point of allowing motorized, you know, bikes, granted, it's for personal use, is I am, that is probably the biggest concern that I have right now. Not to mention that we are thinking about putting a motorized bicycle course next to a bar and, you know, safety concerns with that, but it's also positioned very close to the bike path, where there's a significant amount of traffic, obviously. And so what kind of safety measures are going to be in place there for for anyone trying to use the the bike path? So that is, that is definitely a significant concern for me. And what I would ask you is if you do consider the personal use, that you clearly define what that is. Because is it personal use, Eric and 100 of his friends that can come and ride motorcycles? I would just ask you to please be very specific with how that is defined. Thank you.
I just, I just have one, one thing else I want to add about about the sound. And we got a kind of a taste of what it's going to be like this winter or this fall, because the music on Saturday wasn't outside, it was back inside again. But it's very loud, and I don't understand Eric's thinking that that the music has to be so loud. I I don't think Eric's going to lose money or or customers if the music is just quieter. The problem we have now is it's inside, all the windows are open. So it's like the guitar is playing right at our house, and that's why we heard it on Saturday. It's just, I don't understand why we want so much conflict in this neighborhood. I mean, we, we want, we want businesses to succeed in town, obviously. But we're we're having some severe quality of life issues with living here, and it shouldn't be. We lived here over 15 years. So we're getting pushed out of our own neighborhood because the town wants to sell water and and collect taxes, so.
Buy your house.
Yeah. Eric, please hold on, I'll call on people one at a time. Excuse me, Mr. Burzens, I mean.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I I didn't mean to tell you to hold on, I apologize if I came across.
No, no, that's okay.
All right, thank you very much. I think I saw someone named only Sue next.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Sue Zegara. I live at 211 East Street, which is kind of diagonal, maybe 100 yards from the proposed recreational motocross or BMX spiking area. And my question is kind of the similar one to Melissa's. Is it personal or is it commercial use? And I'm hearing it being said that it's commercial, I mean, that it's personal use for family, for Eric and family use. However, some of the planning board also was raising questions about, well, are we going to need to increase parking in the future for the motocross? Making it sound like it was actually going to become commercial at some point. So I would like clarification and to be assured that it's not going to be commercial as well as, you know, the motorized aspect of it, like the bicycle aspect, that sounds awesome to me. But I I do recall sometime this spring, back in May, I believe it was, I had noticed that they were building the increased bike area, and then one day, I don't remember if it was a weekend or what, but I work from home, and I could hear the motorized bikes going for a couple of hours. And that was the only instance, and I think that might have correlated with the the city, you know, having them stop. But I would, I would like clarification on whether it's for personal use versus commercial or and if it could become commercial in the future. And then also just what that means, what does personal mean? Like Melissa said, how many people in the family and how many friends? And and then parameters around any motorized vehicles being used. And just as an aside, it it doesn't really bother me, but I can hear the the music over here on East Street.
Good to know. Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. I see Mr. John Hayden next.
Oh, hi. John Hayden, 19 Fort Hill Road, across the street from the brewery. And wanted to address a couple of things. One is the sound, the reading through the narrative for the permit application. The idea that those music couldn't be heard from the street is not true. You're on the wrong day. We can hear it basically every time. Well, maybe not every time, but when they're playing and we can hear it inside the house. And I recognize songs they're playing, Lynyrd Skynyrd, Rolling Stones. I know the song they're playing, so we can hear it. Probably doesn't need to be that loud. My concern is that, overarching concern is that there's some permits in place, and the applicant is not following the permits. There, despite what's written, there haven't been followed. And so what's coming up next? Is it going to get louder and louder? We don't know. And we really need to have some sort of specific limits, because without the north noise ordinance or anything that what's to stop the music from getting louder and louder. The other thing is with the, well, the BMX or the motocross or the bicycles, the only bicycles I've seen over there was a couple of kids one time. The other times it's been motorbikes. So that needs to be said straight up. And they're quite irritating, as you know, listening to a motorcycle, very, but not much of a muffler, driving back and forth, going around. Personal use, I, I mean, I guess every person has a right to do that, but it's quite irritating to the neighbors. And again, my concern is what's coming next? There's been talk in in writing and earlier in this, in the this meeting about the community using it. Right, it's a community function or something like that. So it's as if someday we're going to have a bunch of people in there doing it. And that doesn't seem right, and certainly not if it's with motorized. But that is just to ruin the neighborhood. Also unclear why we're even talking about that now when the applicant is totally out of compliance. Like, why are we even considering things motocross? Hey, we need to get the the brewery like back within bounds. And I guess that's it.
Thank you, I really appreciate your comments. One thing I I have seen another person next I'm about to call, but one thing that I'd like to add is just in this may seem a no brainer, but, you know, the the appropriate thing to do whenever you're having a complaint about a neighbor or noise complaint, specifically, you know, is to call the police, that's your, that's your first, the first option. And I'm sure you guys are are doing that or not doing that, but I just, I want to, I want to note that, that that, you know, that's the the enforcement vehicle. I see someone named Joyce next. Are you there, Joyce? Going once. Give her a second. It's her, in case they need to unmute. Okay. I don't see anyone else with a hand up or looking to speak, so I'm just going to throw it out there. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this point? Oh, something's happening to Joyce's thing. So I don't, I don't see anyone else. She comes back in a second, I'll try and give her a chance. But other than that, I think at this point, Attorney Lane would definitely need to continue the the meeting. And we're looking for some new stuff. The one thing that I kind of wanted to to get a handle on before we ended this meeting tonight to continue is really about the the traffic study. And I really didn't hear much from the neighbors about that. And I was going to, because I'm kind of on the fence personally, I was going to let that inform whether I felt a study was needed. So are there any other board members that wish to comment on that or or Jeff or Curtis? Because as it is right now, my inclination is to think that it's probably an unnecessary expense for this applicant.
I agree. I was on the fence also, but it didn't seem like an issue, so I I agree with that sentiment as well.
Anyone else?
Especially if the neighbors so far haven't said anything about traffic, I haven't heard anything.
Nor I.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So as of now, I.
Sorry, if if I could speak up.
Oh, yes, public speak is fine, go ahead.
My name is Hunter Kyle, 35 Fort Hill Road. I wasn't going to comment because I made this comment at the last meeting. Traffic is my primary concern. I mean, traffic is considerably higher when the brewery is in operation. I have concerns about the fact that not everybody, but a vast majority of the people going to the brewery are driving and presumably drinking. I have a young toddler. I actually put up a fence for safety reasons. You know, it's not just traffic from the brewery, but traffic concerns in general, and the traffic is much higher when the brewery's in operation. So I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that. That's exactly the feedback we were looking for. I mean, and of course that'd be a natural concern because the, the brewery in its operation has been bringing for a long time more traffic by. And especially with a young one, that'd be a concern. The question is however, is, is the change in what they're used doing warrant the expense of them taking the time to, to measure that? And I, I'm just, I'm really, I'm just not convinced that, that that's essential.
With, with all, all due respect, if I could, if I could comment again, um, aren't they asking to expand their parking lot? Um, by, I think the number was almost triple the number of spaces. I mean, isn't that?
That's correct. The COVID usage, uh, you know, the, the, the point I'm trying to make is that these people have been parking there since then. When they say they're expanding it, they're retroactively doing it because they're out of compliance. What you've been seeing is people parking in these spots that were approving already over the course of the last year and a half, however long it's been out of compliance. So it's really kind of a question of, is it more? I mean, I, I just, this is a personal thing. I personally think at this point, I have a handle on the fact that there's a lot of cars going by. There's a lot of traffic and I just don't see it as too much for that road. Enough to the point where I'm saying, you know what? This is close enough to be a question in my mind that I wanna see them go ahead and, and spend all that money on putting out a traffic study, which will inevitably likely come back to say, well, no, it's, you know, it's, it's rated D or, or E on that use. And, you know, I mean, that it, it's very rare that we see a traffic study that stops things. Do, do, I, I hope you understand the point I'm trying.
I think I, I agree with you. I don't think this is necessarily a cost that the brewery should incur, incur. I think it's a question of the traffic on a road that is very narrow with no lines and no sidewalk and a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And it's more of like a question to the town, I think. This is just like an avenue to bring up the issue. Um, I've, I've complained personally about the speed limit, which I'm told is forty or forty-five. Like this road, people should not be driving forty-five miles an hour. And then they put up signs which end basically at the breweries, um.
It's very ambiguous what.
At the property and then after that down by Arcadia. So like the stretch that I live in is like lawless, you know, people can drive as fast as they want and it's, it's only become an issue with the brewery because people, it's very successful business with a lot of cars. And, um, yeah.
I'm sure that it affects East Street as well and not, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's having.
But yeah. I, I don't necessarily think it's, it's something that they should incur. It's just.
Traffic is an issue.
It's just an issue. Yeah.
To say that traffic is not an issue for the neighbors is a.
And we already have some information fed to us when the recent Dunkin' Donuts, uh, permit came by. We are, we have a sense now of the traffic that's gonna go to that direction, coming in and out of the community, which I think is probably, you know, it, it, the more likely turn for a lot of people coming in and out to go to Fort Hill, because that's where ninety-one's entrance is. So, and, and we know a light's going in there. So in my mind, like a piece of that package has already just been studied. There's a new mitigation going in that's unrelated to this client in that area. Um, I'm just not sure, like, I'm not convinced that it, that the additional information this traffic study would give us would impact the decision. But I need board input on that. Anyone else have any feelings?
Thanks. I did wanna acknowledge that, um, Baltimore raised the hand and I think that's Eric. I don't know when that went up, but I did wanna just acknowledge that because I think you took me first, but, um, the question about traffic study, you know, is, is understood. I think there could be an intermediate step or at least a quick discussion of, um, you know, you asked kind of some questions and you got revenue. Um, I think you do have an opportunity, I think with a real operation that's not, you're not a hypothetical operation. You are an active operation. I think, you know, some numbers could be produced in terms of veh- vehicle trips. Um, that would not cost, um, you know, the applicant, you know, a traffic engineer level study. Um, that would be one option. Um, but what I really want to chime in on was, which I, which I think is related to this. It's just, you know, we, we've talked a lot about COVID restrictions and that kind of thing. And that's the present day. Um, but what the, the, the the ambiguous thing in my mind, and I had a note to, to flag this for, for figuring out, what do we do if we want more information at the next meeting? But, you know, the, the fire department occupancy is rather high. So it's three thirty-nine, as we talked about. You know, I, what I heard or my note was that the current occupancy is limited to one thirty. We, I think the board kinda needs, needs to understand what happens when the pandemic is no longer an issue, because that's the projected outcome here. And whether that occupancy number would go back up to, to anywhere near the maximum. And I think that's a, it hasn't been clear. And I think it relates to not necessarily that a traffic study is warranted. But are, are, is everyone really on the same page about the, the occupancy of the site and how it would function? When, when the pandemic is not an issue, I, you know, I think that is all connected in my mind. And so it wasn't clear if the applicant is willing to accept the condition that the occupancy is limited to one thirty, you know, moving forward. You know, that would be capturing sort of the present day discussion, but absent of a condition on that, I think I see no limit. Um, and once COVID restrictions are removed, you know, i- it's not clear that we've really captured the full, the full use of the site.
Uh, Jeff, thank you. Uh, before considering, first off, um, I, I didn't see Baltimore's hand up. I apologize. I'll get to that in a second, but I just wanna touch on some points you wrote, raised right now to make sure that I lock them in. You said one thirty, current permitted occupancy.
What I, what I, what I heard was that whether it's a dictated COVID restriction or some version that one thirty was what was the interior, um, occupancy currently, but it, it's not clear to me and I, it could be explained. And, and I think the applicant could probably talk to this, but, you know, is that a permanent? Is that the permanent limit or could, could we see things change in the future?
All right. I don't wanna lose track of this, but I don't wanna delay too much. Um, uh, Mr. Burzens, I think that's Baltimore.
I guess to answer Jeff's question, our certificate of occupancy says three thirty-nine. This is what the town gave us. Uh, but let's take a step back. All right, let's go, let's go to the, uh, I recently purchased this property. All right, a couple of years ago, and it was divided into four sections. All right. So we would have had four. Before you, everyone likes to call me a jerk. All right, but let's, let's, let's take a step back and let, let's look at what the actual plan says. Right, right in front of everyone's property, or, or all my and meet intimate neighbors, let's call them. Okay, I'm keeping that a grass field. Okay, every single one of them, they saw that for sale sign, okay, at the edge of the road. Okay, they had the opportunity. And in front of your planning board, okay, you divided that into four sections. Okay, there could have been four industries in there. Okay, I'm like, it, it's kind of rough being, um, you know, like I, for what is eight thirty now? All right, I've taken two and a half hours of abuse. Okay. No, I spent one point.
Eric, Eric, I really just wanna encourage you and I to have a conversation after this hearing.
It's just kinda, it's kinda rough.
I hear you, man, but I think it's time to just wrap this up.
Fine, fair enough.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burzens. Um, okay. Uh, so the other, the, I think one of the important things that, that Mr. Bag brought up that, that actually would probably go a long way to kind of getting us off the fence on this here is if we didn't request a, um, a traffic study, but we requested perhaps you could count, uh, you know, the amount of cars that happened, say, next Saturday or provide some sort of, you know, summary of, uh, from your expert perspective, we're not requiring you to go and pay for another expert of, of traffic. That might be, I, I think, I, forgive me if I'm misinterpreting what you said, Jeff, but that might be, uh, something that would benefit us. Is that around where you were going with that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think that's the intermediate. That's why I was trying to ca- capture an intermediate option, which is you could have real time data available to, to relatively easily, I would imagine.
Uh, Mr. Lane, is that, uh, something that perhaps you could, uh, you know, provide?
Uh, real time data on volume of traffic?
We're looking for, you know, it, it, I think what we're really after at this point is to get a sense of how many cars are coming in and out over the course of a week?
I mean, if what we're talking about is simply counting cars, um, in a one week period.
That'd be about right.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm trying to minimize this for you.
I, I understand, I understand. And, um, I'm also trying to minimize costs and aggravation. Um, so, uh, you know, a, a, assuming we're simply talking about counting the number of cars that, uh, enter the property in a weeks, in a week's time. Um, and I'm assuming we're talking about picking a week at random and just checking it for that one week. I, I, I don't, I don't know everything that will be required or, or what, uh, tools or instruments would be required for that kind of a thing. Uh, but in my mind, it seems minimal. Um, I would recommend to my client that if the cost is not prohibitive, that we definitely, uh, undertake that as the board is asking.
Yeah. And let's put it another way, so that if, if this were a proposed, you know, use with one, over one hundred parking spaces, the planning board would be getting a traffic impact study along with the application. So I think there's an attempt to have the applicant try to provide some kind of data on what the traffic flow is. And I would, I would have you compare it to what happens with the full occupancy that's granted by the city, plus the, plus the proposed one hundred extra diners outside. I mean, we, we were really in an intermediate place where the applicant, you know, has not provided a traffic impact study, which we would get from a lot of applicants, um, you know, of this size and scale. So I think you, you just really need to think it through. You can take another meeting to decide what you wanna try to provide. But, you know, it's all in lieu of actually providing what would have been required had we, you know, had we had proper consultation and brought an applicant through the process.
I mean, I guess what I wanna say is that, uh, the answer that it, is that I am going to recommend to my client that we, uh, cooperate with city planning to come up with some, uh, some intermediate, uh, data, as you're referring to it, Jeff, um, that is not cost prohibitive. Uh, so without having consulted with my client or fully understanding the costs, I'm saying, yes, we come at this with, uh, openness, uh, cooperation and finding this intermediate place that does not become cost prohibitive. Um, so what I'd agree to is to continue this conversation between this meeting and the next one, so that by the next meeting, we have submitted some kind of data. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lane. I'm about to wrap this up. I do see one more person I wanna call. And I just wanna comment that, um, we don't use the chat as part of our minutes. So if you put comments in the chat, we won't respond to them and they won't go into the minutes. Um, I did put a piece of information in the chat was just for the people here to know where they can go uh, on the city website immediately to get a link, but that's not gonna go in the minutes. And I see that someone did make some comments there. I just want you to be aware that's not. Uh, we, we won't be considering that. Um, and I see Laura A. Fisher next.
Hi, uh, thank you. I know this has been going on for a couple of hours now.
Just ask your address, please.
Oh, sixty-one Clap Street. I'm, I'm the one that's about half a mile away, um, through the woods and across the field. Um, I don't wanna belabor, uh, the noise and sound issue. Um, I had to hop off for an hour to teach online. Uh, so I'm back. I don't know what happened in that forty-five minutes or so. Um, I understand the, um, limitations this, this board has with regard to noise and sound. Um, I understand the sort of wanting nature of what's on the books in this town. Um, and I just wanted to mention that I, I did try to approach this from a very neighborly perspective with the applicant. I tried calling the brewery a few times. Um, I was told to show up there because he wouldn't return a phone call. Um, I, I tried to have a conversation. I just wanna highlight that. Um, and I'm not saying that this is every four nights a week. It's, when it happens, it's incredibly loud. I guess what I'm looking for is just some neighborliness and thinking about uh, maybe a site plan, right? So where, where's the music facing? It's, it's facing right now directly at my house with no sound mitigation. Um, it might not appear that loud at the source. Um, but the topography of the land beyond the woods is it drops and it opens up into a field and it's incredibly loud. Um, several nights, some weeks. Um, it's not entirely predictable. Um, I, and again, I understand what's on the books. I, I'm just looking for a little bit of specificity um, with regard to if this expansion is happening and it already has. Um, maybe we can think and revisit, uh, some of the mitigation issues and the sighting. Um, I guess that's what I would be looking for here. I'm not trying to shut the brewery down. I'm happy for its success. Um, and, um, I just, I think because of the divergent nature of experiences here, I, I just wanna say two people on this call drove by one night. Um, I live here, I've lived here for a year. Um, and I have a different experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I'd like to talk a little bit now about process. Um, first off, I just wanna make a personal comment. It's clear that there's some animosity going on between the property owner, the neighbors, this board. Um, I'd love to reverse that. I certainly don't feel that. Uh, you know, the, the comments that, that, that were made i- in this meeting, uh, by the applicant, I think are, are unfortunate and shouldn't be the tenor of communication between neighbors, uh, and the board. So I want that to be said because I'm hoping we can turn that around and, and work as a community to come up with solutions. And see everyone as neighbors and teammates in this process. Sometimes we won't all agree, but I think that's something that's lacking. It's unfortunate. And I think that hopefully that, that gets turned around as part of this. And the other thing I wanna talk about is what's likely to happen. Mr. Mr. Lane, Attorney Lane, excuse me, um, you, uh.
You don't need to use the title.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, but y- you clearly will, will set up a time to continue this. We'll talk about that in a second. My expectation is that at some point, we're gonna have to start coming out with perspective conditions, perspective findings, and it's likely that we'll be working on those next meeting. And probable that we'll even need another meeting after that to finalize, which is to say that next meeting we'll review, we'll talk about what you've come up with, we'll make our agreement, we'll start to list out our findings. And we'll probably ask Curtis to then draft those for a third meeting. I, this is where I'm thinking we're going. And I just wanna spell it out just in terms of how I think this will, this is likely to play out, so that we all have the same expectations. Because I think that getting our conditions right on this is gonna be imperative. And we have two special permits to do it for, so it's even a little bigger than it, than it normally would be. And just looking at the bulk of that and the time this meeting took, I wanna make sure we're on the same page. I think that's probably the best thing to expect. I might be wrong. You know, I always try to make these go efficiently. But what I'm looking at is an expectation, it'll probably go up three meetings. And next meeting, we'll be asking our, our planning, our assistant planner to work on a draft. Uh, Curtis, does that seem pitting for you?
Totally. Having help with whatever the board wants.
And Attorney Lane, will that work for you?
Well, uh, just to be clear, when you say three meetings, including this one?
Yeah, including this one.
Yeah. So we make a submission for the next one for review and then at that point begin to work out the, any conditions for, um.
In the findings.
Special permit.
And then we'd come back for a third one for any final tweaking, review with the debt, the draft that was done and, and finalize a path forward that resolves these issues that we have currently and accounts for the new permits that are requested and hopefully resolves the animosity that, that's being felt right now and brings us back as a community. But that might be wishful thinking. So, um, let's talk now about the date of the next meeting. Um, how much time do you think you need to prepare the materials that we've requested?
I feel like I'm gonna need some time to make sure that I've captured all the materials that, that are requested. We're obviously not gonna recap right this moment. I'm wondering.
Well, we can recap. I think it's important to recap.
I, I just wanna make sure that, 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 that we're nailing it and that we don't submit something to find out that we. We might have to recap and, uh, you know, I know it's kind of mine, but, um, I, I, my only concern with all of these continuances is, uh, uh, the ongoing cost and aggravation to my client. So before I agree to it, because also I haven't had the opportunity to consult with them further about this. Yes, please, let's recap and make sure we are nailing down everything that we need to do by the next one.
Certainly. And, uh, and in all honesty, I just wanna state that, you know, about three meetings is about one less than the normal.
Right. This is a complicated project. It's large and we.
No, no, I, I, I hear you. And I have been trying to, uh, to prep my client. No, no, I, I, I hear you and I have been trying to, uh, to prep my client for, for these possibilities, I just, um, please, and I don't, I don't mean to make any, making any criticism, uh, I'll shut up, let's recap.
Okay, so I think, uh, stormwater permit is going to be on, uh, a, a lighting plan.
Okay, that we've got.
Please, other board members, I, I'm getting tired, definitely jump in and.
No, it's, uh, yeah, instead of stormwater permit, I think you just meant updated stormwater, uh, calculations, yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Uh, we have a lighting plan for the whole area, uh, we need a snow removal plan.
Yep. Traffic counts.
Traffic counts, of course.
I definitely just want to give you a heads up that, you know, you've heard our individual opinions about noise. The neighbors seem to be concerned about noise, I want to find a solution, but I, you know, I my own views on it, I, I think we're relatively limited to what to do. I would love to come up with some kind of condition that there'll be an element of respect that doesn't shut down live music. If you can think of anything that you can propose that's going to make this easy for us.
Uh, that is what I was just about to propose, is that I'm going to, uh, consult my clients and, uh, would, uh, be very happy to propose some, some workable conditions.
Or, or maybe a planting plan, maybe there's some planting that you can do along the perimeter, uh, of the property to, um, to mitigate some sound to the neighbors, uh, you know, maybe think outside the box of ways you might be able to implement some planning to, uh, mitigate sound.
Certainly, you're, you're, you are certainly speaking this gardener's language, so, uh, we will, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll think about these things, thank you so much.
Personally, don't know about the rest of the board, but I know from experience reviewing those videos that, that, uh, Mr. Burzens was right. That plexi was originally for the front of the building, it got kept in and I think it was a, a misspeak and we just sort of took advantage of it as a board on the two thousand seventeen meeting that it was going to be moved over to the west and wasn't really understood. And plexi is just not going to do anything for this case, I'm not a believer, the rest of the board may disagree with me. But as far as the plexi is concerned, I just don't think I'm looking to push it, any thoughts there?
Well, I mean, I, I, um, I, I do want some sort of plan to mitigate the sound for the, for the butters. If, whether it's, you know, I think at the, in two thousand seventeen, we talked about a planting plan around the patio and I think we talked about that planting plan possibly being in lieu of the plexiglass.
Yes.
So we had, you know, there was going to be planters all around it, I don't know if that occurred, I don't, I've never been to this establishment, so. Um, but, you know, maybe there's some way we can do it that way. In, in lieu of plexiglass, I'm, I'm definitely open to ideas on ways we can mitigate the sound. I think we talked about closing windows, if we, if the music was indoors, closing windows that face the butters, that may not have happened, I don't know. Maybe it did, we can talk about that as well, but there has to be some sort of ways we can, we can work together to figure out ways to mitigate the noise.
Okay, I think that's great, good memory too, I remember we discussed that a long time ago. So, so those kinds of ideas, if you come at us with stuff like that, uh, Mr. Lane, I mean, we'll probably discuss it, but I, you know, I think it's a great idea to kind of head it off at the pass, uh, you know, with something ready to go.
Great, um, if I could keep going then through my list here, make sure that we've got it, so we just did. It sounds like on recreation zones. Uh, I believe, um.
I think that was just the demarcation on lines, just make it clear, either a line or some hatching or just make it clear what was recreation, what was included with the brewery.
Okay, um.
Good point.
Recreation, uh, lines of delineation, got it, uh, and, um, I believe Mr. Bag mentioned, uh, special events, um. I, I, I was.
I think that was the issue with relation to special events, is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I think we do not have clarity on how the special events function, you know, applicant did say that you got a one day event license, that's from the licensing board, it, it's, it's good, it continued to do that, but it doesn't necessarily negate the need to address it, the planning board at, at this, at this, you know, this process too. So I think just paralleling it, making sure that there's an understanding of what the special event functions like, that, you know, go a long way.
Uh, and essentially, uh, the, so just some kind of proposal about the number of special events that might occur and how the space is going to be used during those special events.
Yeah, I think that'd be useful information, yep.
Great, okay, um. And, um, water, I mean, there's, there's a long and lengthy technical discussion on, uh, water drainage, but it sounds like that's the whole idea with the, um.
Stormwater management.
Updated store, uh, updated stormwater, uh, calks.
Exactly.
All right, um, so I'm going to stop adding to this list unless the board tells me there's more they would like.
I think that's, I think that will get us a long way toward, you know, finally getting to our conditions and findings next meeting. Uh, you know, there are still some tricky things, the sound's going to be the big one, the motorcycle sound especially, that's, you know, something we'll have to cover, but I we've gone as far as we can go tonight, uh, Mr. Wyman, looking at our calendar, what dates can we offer Mr. Lane and are we talking about a month in advance, Mr. Lane, two weeks, what, how do you want to play this?
Uh, you know, let me actually ask Gary to weigh in on that, um, because it sounds to me like there's a fair amount of technical work that has to happen here, Gary. What, how much time do you think you're going to need?
Realistically, don't, because we want to make sure you have enough time to submit it and we have enough time to evaluate it before the meeting and it's, and it's comprehensive.
I'd be very well need a month because, uh, we've, one of the items or a couple of items on here may require some more field survey. And that depends on the schedules, you know, that I can get from the surveyor. So I don't have an answer to that, I, I figure at least a month in order to get something back to you and you're going to need some time and your engineer is going to need some time to evaluate it.
If we were to submit, um, by what, Gary, say the Friday before Thanksgiving? I think that's, um.
Is it the nineteenth?
It's exactly thirty, that's thirty-one days from today.
Make sure you have enough time, I, you know.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I don't, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to rush this either. I'm also not super clear at the moment what traffic counts is going to entail and our creative explorations into noise mitigation.
I can give you some advice for the traffic counts, Peter, uh, I would just set up a trail cam or some very inexpensive camera.
That's what I was thinking.
Record the amount of vehicles entering the site and then play it back in double, triple speed with a piece of paper and just check, 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 check. I, I used to, I have a master's degree in traffic.
Excellent.
But you can't hire him, don't hire him.
Just put a, a trail cam will cost you fifty bucks in it and you can attach it to a tree and this.
I was thinking, I was thinking that, I was also thinking, I mean, is there any kind of like, um, like ground, uh, wire that would, like.
There's pneumatic tubes, but you're going to have to hire someone, they're more expensive, I'm telling you, it's cheaper than, than, than the cheapest, uh, it's cheaper than minimum wage.
Put the, put the trail cam up and sit and count your, uh, your video in high speed.
Like I said, you put it on triple speed and you just sit there with a notepad, check it off and, yep, that'll.
But you can't.
Okay, well, those are my exact two ideas, Danny, thank you very much, um, uh, so, yeah, I, I mean, uh, Gary, why don't we just, uh, push out submission to the end of November and then look for, uh, was that?
December seventh would be the next meeting.
The next meeting, yeah, does that sound fine to you all that if we submit by, I don't know what day of the week, November thirtieth is?
It's December seventh is our next meeting and it's.
Right, so you'd have to, you'd have to submit be by the, what, the second, Curtis?
So for an update to an existing special permit, we generally hold, uh, I, I forget the exact timeline, um. Would it be the twenty-third, Jeff? So two weeks in advance of the seventh? Just so that it, the board has enough time to review?
And the engineer does.
Is, or is it, or is it all the way back to the sixteenth if it's a new, if it's a new set of full plans, you know what I mean?
No, I think you can apply, I mean, this is all going to be updated information of things that have been seen, so I don't think you need the full two weeks, I, you know, in, in past cases.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Like November twenty-ninth, you know, I think would be totally sufficient, you know, I think you gotta just try your best at this point, I mean, I think you know, if, if you're still awaiting information, if we're clear on what you're still awaiting, at that point, we can, we can, you know, we can do, deal with some of the issues, I think, if you're still waiting for some of the technical information.
Sure, so then, uh, I, I'm so sorry, if we could, um, personal preference, as I come to understand my own scheduling and needs better, uh, I, I hate submitting things on a Monday. Could we submit on Tuesday, November thirtieth, so that we have Monday to kind of coordinate and organize? Given that the twenty-ninth, I would assume is the Monday after Thanksgiving.
I certainly have no issue with that.
I am, that's fine.
Okay, so we, we're shooting for November thirtieth and then a December seventh. Okay.
At six P M, yeah, um, do we have anything else, uh, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, and I, I would be remiss, but so we talked somewhere along the way, we talked about the lease agreement between the two properties and
That's correct.
Being able to provide that, I think that would be informative to understand the nature of that relationship and then and I was previously belaboring the question about occupancy, so I think it would just be nice to understand you know, the, the, the future, you know, we want, we need to be looking at this permit not just under covid restrictions unless you want a condition of it that comes back after covid is gone. So I think we just want to think about the occupancy numbers and understand that a little bit more clearly, I think, I just wanted to throw those out, because I think you know, the board is not, the board is summarizing to help. I think we, we're not bound by this summary, whatever was kind of discussed during the meeting is kind of fair play and maybe Curtis and I can you know, review that with you, but I just wanted to capture those things, so they were on my list.
Great.
Okay, so, uh, for those members of the public that are still here, I don't believe we, we reissue for the continued meeting any kind of notice, um, so the next meeting will be on December seventh at six P M, uh, that this is the notice, um, but those schedules will be found on the city calendar.
Great.
Um, just out of curiosity, do you have anything else on that agenda that day, Curtis, that you're aware of?
Nothing is scheduled yet.
Okay, so at this point, I am looking for a motion to continue both the special permits uh, for Fort Hill and, uh, at.
Do I have to do them separately or can I do them combined?
I think since we're holding them combined, we can do them combined.
Okay, um, I move to continue the special permit discussions for lot twenty-three and lot twenty-three point one, map one thirty-one for, uh, the properties on Fort Hill Road to December seventh at six P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I, did I miss anyone? No, I think I got it all, okay, good, all right, thank you very much. Uh, and we will see you on December seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, I don't think we had anything else, you, anyone have any announcements? Anything happening in the planning world? CPTC, you want to talk about that, Curtis?
Yeah, um, the, I just sent out an email to the planning board, hang on, let me pull it up. Okay, so the CPTC, the committee, uh, the community planner training, uh, is a great opportunity for boards and staff people to learn about um, the various responsibilities of boards in the region. You're under no obligation to attend, but these are great trainings and they can help you get additional accreditation as board members. Um, I sent the link to the board and if any member of the public is interested, I'm happy to send that to you as well. Members of the board and, uh, city staff of the city can help, uh, pay for, pay for any classes you're taking with them. I believe it's all being done remotely this year, um, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I have actually shamefacedly never been to one, uh, this, this has all been an illusion. Um, but I think Jeff could probably speak to it a little bit more than I could.
Uh, uh, before that, I just want to add that I strongly recommend, having done it myself, I know I was there with Gary and, and others have done it and you can actually get levels of certification to kind of prove your expertise in this. We've got a couple of members on the board that are level two certified, right, you, you get to name that, name drop that one. Uh, do, do it, it's worth it, you learn a lot, they're great courses, I don't know, Ken, Danny, I definitely recommend those to you, Jeff, did you want to add any?
I'm planning to take, take at least one, yeah.
Yeah, I think we just try to encourage especially new members and then there are veteran members, if there's newer topics, that there is a great resource. It's really the only one that Massachusetts offers, so, um, just try to consider it, um, I'm level two certified.
Me too.
But they, there used to be a, there used to be a Saturday conference where you could knock off at least four in one shot, so that's, that's how that was, it used to happen, but.
All right, well, at that, I think we've wrapped it up for the evening, I'm looking for, you know, what kind of motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I, have a great evening, when is our next meeting, Curtis?
Next meeting could be November the ninth, not November the second.
November ninth.
November the ninth, at six P M, see you then.
Got it, see you then, my friends, have a good night.
Yeah.
Because November the second is election day.
Got it.